Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our, what day is it? Tuesday, August 27th, City Council meeting. We'll begin with a moment of silence. Thank you, and we do have a quorum present, all five council members here. And if I can ask our city clerk to lead us in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Newmeyer, closed session report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. There was no closed session today, so nothing to report.
That was good for us, sorry. With that, we'll move into Mayor and Councilmember reports announcements, and I will start to my left with Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Wixom. All right, I just have a couple of announcements as far as events that are coming up. Actually, well, one is coming, an event coming up, and one just passed. So, this last weekend, Morro Bay in Bloom, many of you attended or knew about the I Heart Morro Bay event that was held here. And over 100 people came out and planted plants and weeded and painted buckets. And this weekend, the buckets were filled with plants, and then they were placed around town. So if you see those painted buckets, that's where they came from. And coming up, the Maritime, the Morro Bay Maritime Museum is having their Family Fun Day. I'm sure folks are probably here to talk about it and probably will continue to talk about it, because I know we have a lot of excited docents here and volunteers that work at the Maritime Museum and work very hard on this event that really is only, I think this is the third year, and I could be corrected by the folks out in the audience that work for the Maritime Museum. But it's a free family fun day for anyone to come out and enjoy all things maritime. And that will be on Saturday, October 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. over in the Triangle Park, right behind the Maritime Museum area. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, good evening, thank you, Mayor. I kind of want to speak to just one event in particular and an offshoot of it. I'm very much looking forward to our 60th anniversary celebration from September 5th to the 7th. But I kind of wanted to speak more to how things like that happen, how events like that happen, how things get done in general. It's not just our staff who works really hard, but it's community support and volunteerism. And as I was reviewing our agenda for this evening, that spoke really hard when I came to looking at our goals. And a lot of what's been achieved, and that we'll be talking about later on tonight, is because of community support, the vast amount that we have here, and the volunteerism. And it happens in so many ways. It happens with what Councilmember Ford was just speaking to, whether it's, you know, planting a garden, whether it's being a docent at the Maritime Museum, if you are a business owner here, being involved in Rotary, or being on the board of the Chamber, or, you know, if you're a hotel, being on the board of the Tourism Bureau. There's just so many things here, fundraising arms, the Community Foundation, and I could go on and on and on. But one of the things that I've spoke to a couple, a few meetings back, and that I get most concerned and worried about at times is the volunteerism that we have when it comes to advisory committees and running for council and office. So I hope, I hope to stress to you here tonight and those out at home and in the other corners of the community, you know, you can have the time, maybe it's not now, but maybe it's later. And just to know that your service is important to us and it's valued, and it goes a long way here with what we're able to accomplish. And whether that's a decade of accomplishment or another 60 years, you do matter, and your expertise and the time that you give and the effort that you give here is very much valued, and it does matter, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton.
I just have a few small things. Talking about the Morro Bay in Bloom and the flowers and all of that, this is one of near and dear to my heart. I get to do a daily flower grooming on my flower box on Morro Bay Boulevard, and it's such a pleasure to me, because so many people stop and ask about it, so it's been doing that, because the flowers are going crazy. So, let's see, I also went to help with the Morro Bay in Bloom event and was stationed down at the Embarcadero. And that was great fun. While I was standing there with another woman, two young men came by, and they were asking questions about, how do you, how do you get the trolley, and where does it go, and all that kind of stuff. So we started chatting, and it turned out that they were, they had come over from Fresno, and they were both like 19 or something. And they were out of money, not surprisingly, so they needed a dollar apiece, and we sent them on their way, got them on the trolley and sent them on their way, but anyway, it was great fun. And then yesterday, I listened to a long meeting where the mayor was and many other council and electeds from all over the central part of the state, talking about the 3CE organization that is energy and different things. And anyway, it was absolutely fascinating to listen to an organization that has grown from just a very few participants to now a huge number of participants, and they're trying to figure out how do they, you know, kind of how do they round up this thing and make it easier to work with. So, anyway, the mayor, I'm sure, will have more things to say about it.
Thank you, Councilmember Barton. Councilmember Landr.
I wanted to make everyone aware that the Harbor Advisory Board meeting on Thursday has been canceled for this month. Also, I stopped in at the Morro Bay Rehab on North Main Street, because I was curious about that. And I met the manager, Maya, who was very welcoming, and explained what they have going on there. And I just wanted to let the community know and the city staff that there are, they have a sobering center there that is pretty much open to anyone that's in need of it. So it's like a 24-hour sobering center, and if someone wanted to stay longer, you know, they can enroll in their insurance and stay longer. But they also now take SenCal insurance, as well as private and Medi-Cal. And they, and this, I thought, found this interesting, there are no residential facilities in San Luis Obispo County that, for women, and this one is, women are, you know, allowed to stay there. That sounds so weird. And then, what was the other thing? Oh, the, I was notified by the Morro Bay Boating Community that they had a great conversation with Lori and Becca at the Harbor Department, and they were able to work out a solution to their SCIF permit policy, and everything has been resolved with that, and that's all.
Thank you very much. I want to do a shout-out in the audience. I see our Morro Bay firefighters, some of them are here, and want to welcome them home, as they've been out on assignment, scattered all over, so thank you for your service, not just to our community, but district-wise. Thank you. The city clerk has asked me to remind everyone that there are two openings on our advisory boards. We have a vacancy on our Citizens Finance Committee, as well as our C-TAC, which meets regarding our roads and is a county seat, the other is a local city seat. So if you'd like more information, please go to our website and consider applying for one of those two advisory positions, as Councilmember Edward shared, and the closing on that is Friday, August 30th. I did attend the San Luis Slocoggs Council of Governments meeting. It was basically updates on road projects and budgeting and what is and isn't going to make it through, so, to be continued. The Chamber Mixer, as was talked about down at the Maritime Museum, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and the Morro Bay Maritime Museum, it was a great turnout, great event, a lot of fun. I attended the monthly Mayor's Meeting in Paso. They have a lot going on up there construction-wise, and it was the day the semi was hanging over the bridge, so there was a lot of backed-up traffic on one-on-one. What was shared from the legislative representatives that were there from Carver Hall and Panetta's Office was, they're working on the concerns of Medicare reimbursements for our county and the challenges that it's posing, getting more and more difficult to find doctors and reimbursements. So know that they are addressing it at a federal level and looking out for those things, and I will provide updates as they come available. The 60th celebration is next weekend. It kicks off Thursday with the Tunes at Tidlins. That is sponsored by the Active Senior Adults of Morro Bay. They have four weeks in a row of Thursday evening events down at Tidlins Park, and there'll be some fun added activities during the kickoff next week. Friday evening, from 4:00 to 8:00, is a art and flower show at the Morro Bay Art Association. It's open to everyone, locals, visitors, everyone. There'll be wine and appetizers. The Dahlia Society and members of that group will be putting dahlias on display, which is our city flower, and we will have dahlia packets available, seed packets, for anyone who wants to go home and attempt to grow some. They're blooming everywhere, they're beautiful. And then we follow up Saturday morning at 10:00 o'clock with our parade, and I would like to thank all those who are helping work on that in the city, that's a big team, along with the Recreation Advisory Board, who's stepping in, Mr. Qualick, the police chief, the recreation manager, and Kirk and Angelica, the Chamber of Commerce, so it is a large group. Visit Morro Bay is participating, so we appreciate everybody bringing this all together. After the parade, we'll go to Tidlins Park for games, and Kiwanis will be cooking hot dogs and cake. So fun day, fun weekend. The last thing I have is, I guess not the last thing, two things. I attended a meeting with the Embarcadero Master Leaseholders. I appreciate their time and input, that they were offering ideas and suggestions regarding the waterfront and the things going on down there. And as Councilmember Barton shared, we had a meeting yesterday, a very long, three-hour Zoom meeting for 3CE, which is our electric provider for the city of Morro Bay. We partner with San Luis City for one seat. Our rotation is coming up, we rotate every two years. The concerns that 3CE is having right now is that, as they've added a total of, I believe, 35 members, the board has 19 members, and they want to reduce it to 11. The concerns mostly are from the smaller communities like ours, where with the seven cities in this county, we would rotate the seat, so we would serve every 14 years with seven cities. So there's some concerns about the reduction of the number and the idea that this was a local community utility and that our local voices would be heard. So we are advocating for those seats, and I appreciate San Luis City's participation. Jam Marx represents us, and she did a great job holding her ground yesterday.
Yeah, she really did.
She really did, so I appreciate that very much to San Luis, thank you. As well as the other cities in our area that still would have a seat, Santa Maria, that has over 100,000 people, still advocated for the smaller communities, so I really appreciate that. And I will share with you as we get more information on that. With that, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things to report. Of course, the 60th celebration, it sounds so wonderful, and we're all looking forward to that. I am working with the county library director regarding a couple of things. One is the placement of our Narlock's box, which essentially is Narcan dispenser box outside the library building, and we're gonna, and city staff and the library staff are gonna discuss that and see where that's going to, how's that, how's that gonna work out. Also, the library has requested to use the library premises for Footbank pickup program, and we're also looking into that possibility as well. And separately, as Mayor and Councilmember Barton stated, and the 3CE Central Coastal Community Energy Program has been throwing a curveball at us, and last minute, letting us know that the community, this organization is gonna change the governing structure. Just like elected officials got together, the city managers in the region also got together to discuss options and the proposal. I, just like Mayor shared, I very much appreciate the collaboration between the city managers and also the leadership of the Slow City Manager. I think that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball. With that, we will move to subcommittee reports. And Mr. Qualick, anything with the water reclamation facility?
Thank you, Mayor, no updates.
Thank you very much. And I do not believe we have anything with offshore wind. As we reported out at the last council meeting, we had met with one wind company, just as a meet and greet. Downtown Design District, I believe, is there anything with that, Mr. Singwald?
So Downtown Design District, there is a subcommittee meeting scheduled this Thursday.
Thank you. And then I'm gonna turn it over to you for the Morro Bay Power Plant, Vistra.
Thank you. So the Vistra VEST subcommittee met last Friday, August 23rd, to discuss three topics. One was a presentation from the fire chief on the off-site consequences analysis. Two was a discussion on Vistra's latest term sheet for a community benefits agreement responding to the city's tentative non-binding counterproposal for the community benefits agreement. Third, the subcommittee discussed the Coastal Commission's August 2nd, 2024 comment letter on the VEST project. Staff is working on scheduling meetings with individual city council members to present the same information. In addition, staff plans to agendize an item for September 24th, provide the council an update on the VEST project. That update will include a presentation from the fire chief on off-site consequences analysis, presentation from myself on the current status of the application and timeline moving forward, and finally, a presentation from the city attorney on the AB 205 process. And that's again, September 24th.
Thank you, Mr. Singwald. Anything to add to that, Mr. Newmeyer?
The only thing to add is that it seems that after talking with our consultants and staff internally, that I know the public's wondering about scheduling for upcoming public hearings, and it looks like the final EIR, I don't think will be completed until near the end of this calendar year. And Community Development Director Singwald perhaps could address that scheduling some more, and I know staff's still working on what that means for the rest of the schedule. But I know the community's interested in the timing of everything, and that also is related to the RINCON amendment that's on the agenda tonight, so perhaps there might be more discussion with that if it's pulled off for council discussion.
Thank you very much, appreciate that, and yeah, we can address it then. Thank you, Mr. Singwald, be prepared. With that, thank you, I will open public comment to items not on the agenda. I'm gonna start with some speaker slips I have, and I'm gonna ask Sharice Hanson to come up first, followed by Deana Lundquist.
Hello, Mayor, councilmembers, so glad to be here, Sharice Hanson. For 2024, I am the Chair for the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here tonight to proudly announce that we have filled the CEO position. We are fortunate to have her with us this evening to introduce herself to you, Deana Lundquist. She started on Friday and has hit the ground running, meeting with board members, and she hopes to visit with you and staff as well soon. I also wanted to take the time to speak about how the Chamber has helped me expand my business. It started all the way back in 2017, and the assistance I received from the Chamber, they helped me navigate the process and provided me with excellent resources to accomplish my goal. During COVID, they became the community's trusted source of new information to sustain our businesses. It is for these reasons I joined the board, to give back and join an excellent group of like-minded business owners. Now, in 2024, my doors have reopened. We have our new boutique hotel, Harbor Walk-In, that has had an excellent first five months. We have, in those five months, contributed to the city funds through transient occupancy tax, sales tax, and harbor fund, rent over $68,000. New and older businesses are really making great contributions to the city budget. I am proud to be a local community member and a small business owner in Morro Bay. I also wanted to give a little update of some of the other things that the Chamber is doing. The Chamber is hosting our monthly Breakfast on the Bay, September 18th, at 7:30 a.m. Breakfast is served. We would like to see you all there. The subject matter is the contributions of our Governmental Affairs Committee over the year from its inception in 2017. Their deep dives into local issues assisted me and many others over the years. This will be a great venue to see the accomplishments and hear from others how their work has aided Morro Bay businesses. It's also a great time to chat and meet with our new CEO. With that, I will give the mic over to Deana Lundquist.
Good evening, it's nice to meet everyone. As Sharice mentioned, I'm your new CEO for the Chamber of Commerce here in Morro Bay. A little bit about me, I'm from the Central Valley originally, born and raised there, did some time on the East Coast for a couple of years. But I'm very familiar with the Central Coast. My husband went to school at Cal Poly, I have two daughters, live up in Morro Bay. I live in Cambria, and I've been a resident of the Central Coast for the last four and a half years. So right now, as Sharice said, I've just been on board for two days, so you can all remember your first few days on the job of a new opportunity. Right now, really what my focus is, is to observe and to listen. I want to look at the past, I want to look at where we are now and where we want to be in the future, and look at how we're gonna get there. But a big piece of that is communicating, right? Communicating with the members of the community, the business community, the citizens, and the government as well. So that's on my list first and foremost right away. So really, what I would like to do for the business community, and for the community overall, is advocate on behalf of the business community, provide access to them for regulations, navigating through the government on a local, regional, and state level. And then ultimately, what we all want is for businesses to thrive and to advance. So that's my mission with the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm thrilled to be a part of it and be a part of this community. So thank you for welcoming me.
Thank you, welcome aboard. Next up, I have Gary Johnson, followed by Linda Winters, and after that, Rachel Wilson.
Beautiful day yesterday, I don't know what happened today. Well, I got three minutes, hey, all right. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, City Council, and especially our Fire Department and Police Department. Okay, I'm gonna be talking about lithium batteries, and, you know, I've been up here for quite a while, several years, talking about lithium batteries. I'm gonna summarize my talk, and here is all the papers I have researched around the world, and I have them right here. And I want to say that I have researched the lithium battery, solid-state and liquid base from Europe, Asia, and our own country. Solid-state batteries made with lithium batteries, such as power tools, cell phones, computers, cars, et cetera, et cetera, is maybe safe, as long as it's done properly. Lithium batteries used for storage systems are not safe. Lithium battery storage systems used in a liquid-based similar, I'm not saying like a car battery, but it's similar to that. The design is very sensitive to the environment and has caused many disasters around the world, globally. All three facilities in California have had three failures, we have three facilities and three failures, and they had to evacuate people in all three facilities. California has been, go ahead to build additional facilities, including Morro Bay. Facilities should not be rebuilt in a populated area. I'm not against them, but not in a populated area. They are dangerous to the public and environment. Now, with that said, I went to the Vistra plant meeting they had in April, and it's in the paper here. This is what really bothered me, a fire in one of the enclosures exposed to the nearest residents, 40% carbon dioxide, 31% hydrofluoric acid, then the list goes on. Now, the person that gave that presentation, we don't really have to worry about the wind, because it only comes from the north. Now, that really bothered me, because at home, I get it from four different directions. Incident responders would likely to extinguish the fire before it burns for 24 hours. Residents would be evacuated. Now, I know we have an evacuated plan, how can we evacuate? We see, in the middle of, on Saturday, for an example, we got thousands of tourists, and even during the week, we got schools, where are we gonna evacuate people? I can't even get out on beach, when I live right off of there. So that really bothers me, to be evacuated in shelters. Well, we gotta have shelters, because if that stuff goes in the air, we're in trouble. And so that's concluding my response for overtime, and thank you for listening, and I hope I can make some inroads. I mean, I've been working with Vista, with the one, the engineers, and so forth, so, anyway, bye.
I always get the tall ones. Good evening, city council members, staff, the chiefs. I am Linda Winters, that 30-year resident in the Morro Bay Mobile Home Park. I wasn't gonna speak tonight because of an age-old mom saying, "If you can't say something nice, don't say anything at all." And I was having a real hard time finding something nice to say, and for me, that's nearly impossible. So sometime last night, I felt a big thunk on my head, and it was obviously my mom's spirit saying, okay, she got my attention, so I said, "What? What do you want, Mom?" She said, "So why are you so down?" And I said, "Well, Mom, I was very up and very positive after the Olympics, the women's performances, the 48% medals won by women, and then the convention, but then I started to feel the tensions building." to feel the tensions building. It's been getting hard, Mom, like flying the flag." "Wait a minute," Mom said, "you always have flown the flag at your house, always, haven't you? And it, but why? Why did you fly it?" And I said, "Because I'm an American, and I'm proud to be an American. I'm going to get through this." Well, my mom said, "You answered your own questions, problems, and concerns. You are an American first and foremost. Your dad, your uncles, your aunts, and your brothers, and your husband fought in three wars to give you that title. You can belong to any political party you want, and that's what being an American is about. So fly your flag proudly." I smiled, and I proudly raised my flag this morning. Thanks, Mom. That's my something nice, and I hope everybody has a safe and happy Labor Day, and I'll see you at Morro Bay 60th. Thank you.
Again, she's a tough act to follow. Good evening, Madam Chair, Council Members and Staff. My name is Rachel Wilson. The first meeting that I ever attended in Morro Bay was back in September of 2022, when RINCON associates facilitated a meeting regarding the future of the power plant property. As an avid kayaker, I was really interested in the proposals for that property. I sat up front, eager to hear the proposals for the site that the California Coastal Commission rightly calls "a unique opportunity site." I will admit that I was in shock when we were basically told by RINCON that due to deed restrictions, a BESS was going to be built on the property, and that our goal was, and I'm quoting Linda here at one point, she used the word "gussy up." Gussy up the surrounding area. What kind of walkways would we want to see, or what kind of beautiful wall would we want? At a later Planning Commission meeting, we were also asked to gussy up the outside and not even talk about the BESS inside. I am thrilled to hear that RINCON is requesting funding for future meetings to develop the master plan for the property. In their August 2 letter, the Coastal Commission stated, "As you know, the project applicant is seeking to develop a BESS on the former power plant site in the city. Under the LCP, the existing land use designation for the site is visitor-serving commercial, which means the BESS is currently not an allowed use." I attended the Coastal Commission meeting in March, where the, when the implementation plan was certified. I was expecting to see someone representing the applicant speak at the meeting to oppose this plan, since it has the power plant property as visitor-serving commercial. No one from them spoke up. In their August 2 letter, the Coastal Commission stated that, quote, "We would expect any approvable master plan to identify all potential allowable uses, such as visitor-serving commercial, recreational, open space, housing, or industrial and applicable resource protection provisions, such as avoiding sensitive habitats and considering coastal hazards for the overall site, where preferably that is done with as much detail as possible, so to be most instructive for future CDP applications." Coastal Commission also noted that the BESS portion of the site is either ESHA or required ESHA, possibly, and that if confirmed, significantly limits what can be developed there. Specifically, if the ESHA analysis is confirmed, the proposed BESS project is not allowable. But this is the good news. In the 2023 survey, your citizens said they wanted that property open space. Thank you.
There are always many topics which I consider bringing up at our City Council meetings. Last time, I had considered addressing the misogynistic terror attacks being blamed on mental illness, or perhaps something could have been gleaned from examining how the Olympics promote existing power structures, as well as, of course, genocide, the intent being to somehow convince you of the need to change the world. It's midsummer of 2002, and I'm four or five years old. I'm standing in my father's ground floor office, staring past his Deep Space Nine and Babylon Five action figures, out the window, across the street, through the fence, and over the lawn to the White House. There's a thought in my mind, just three words, over and over, round and round. I didn't understand them at the time, but I understand now. Those three words, "This is wrong." Instead of watching every moment of the Olympics, I've been watching live, when I can, the protests at the RNC and the DNC. Policing and protesting have evolved a lot since the George Floyd uprising. The public had shown that we were no longer willing to look the other way, quite like we did before. There were so many moments where I was fixated by the swarm of cameras converging on the police. These protesters were disciplined, and very much unlike a mob. Who keeps us safe? We keep us safe. While it is true that my favorite part of the Olympics was, in fact, the rail sabotage, I realize that true revolution does not happen in the streets, nor in the voting booth. Real revolution, real intifada, happens in the heart and in the home. You spend your time chasing the American dream, never realizing it was stillborn. You make sacrifices for a future that is dying. Kill it before it takes us down with it. When I see open ground within our neighborhoods, be it a front yard or a vacant lot, I see space to feed the bodies and souls of my neighbors. One by one, these spaces are turning into apartments. Little by little, the noose tightens. When offered more than you need, say no. Luxury is to be cherished, that someday it may no longer constitute murder. Give up what you have, for nothing else will be good enough. I have done the same, there's very little that I have left, and those few things are things that I value, and those things of intrinsic value that I possess, I am somewhat ashamed of.
Greetings, everyone, I'm Margaret Carmen, and I value that I get to come up here and public speak and be in front of all of you, and have my three minutes, thank you. The last meeting, a public comment asked if you would proactively respond to Senator Laird's comment in the Tribune on July 23rd, which stated, quote, "All negotiations are a give-and-take," said Senator Laird. He and other lawmakers said that they expect to see more informational hearings on the subject, such as Diablo nuclear plant cost, et cetera, to get more information from PG&E. So that brings me to the two ASKS that I have. Number one, would you, the City Council, ask Assemblymember Addis and Senator Laird how quickly and where the informational hearings will be held? And the second ask is, would the City Council offer to them, meaning Senator, offer to them the Morro Bay Community Center as a public venue so that we might attend? So I'm asking that you make this a future agenda item. Thank you very much. I got a little time, I'm going to tell you, I spent six days in Albuquerque at a Nikola Tesla Technology Conference, and I heard, "Six days of creating energy that is not harmful to the environment." That's what I'm praying for. Thank you.
Good evening, Morro Bay City Council, Mayor Wickson. Tina Metzger, resident of Morro Bay. It just occurred to me that I wanted to follow up on my email of the last City Council meeting, in that I asked that the mayor asked for a pause in accepting any new battery energy storage systems, projects, until we have siting, reg, siting and development standards? And I just wondered where we are with that pause, and asking for the creation of our town's development standards and siting standards for any new BESS projects that might come into the city, within the city limits, or in the sphere of influence areas.
Anyone else for public comment on items not on the agenda? AGP, is there anyone in the queue?
Mayor Wickson, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Thank you for your questions, I'll see if I can have some of those answers sent to some of you regarding the hearing and pausing our energy projects and where those would be directed. Thank you. With that, I will open public comment on the consent agenda. I have two speaker slips, Steve Page and Tina Metzger.
My name, my name is Steve Page, and good evening, and I will just read verbatim. Please amend the seemingly flawed EIR process by making the following requirements added to the payment approval for the RINCON associates' evaluation of the response EIR letters. Number one, require RINCON to review the California Coastal Commission letter of August 2, 2024, on the 20-acre BESS site, including the possibility that it is ESHA. Why? Because, as with the sewer, there are other locations that allow lithium battery BESS outside populated areas, outside the coastal zone, outside the Suzami Zone, outside the flood zone, and outside the sea rise zone, that would be preferable to the Coastal Commission. It seems like that has already been included, from what I heard before. Thank you. Please read this conclusion of Sarah McGregor from the Coastal Commission. My second request would be to require RINCON perform an EPA Carbon Footprint Comparison for several BESS storage systems, not just lithium-based batteries. Why? RINCON makes no attempt to include the EPA Scope 1, 2, and 3 EPA Carbon Footprint Standards into their EIR. A comparative analysis should be included in the Optimal CO2 Recovery. This flaws the EIR in its entirety by its omission. Hyperlink to the EPA protocol is supplied. Finally, you should require RINCON associates to evaluate life cycle carbon footprint for different non-lithium BESS systems included in the CEC Long-Term Best Storage Economic Assistance Program. Why? Because the life cycle of lithium batteries has a major flaw in it. They require 100% replacement at 15 years, where liquid air BESS and iron rust BESS have a 30-year life cycle with nowhere near that, that cost of replacement in terms of carbon footprint. In summary, giving RINCON associates money to respond to the EIR without recognizing these three major flaws would be a social injustice. EPA Life Cycle Energy Analysis is crucial to any related, to energy related to social justice. I thank you for your time, and, and just want to say, pardon me for my formatting, but people can read the PDF on their cell phones easier than a PowerPoint, but that's how I did that, anyway. Well, thank you very much for your time. Bye-bye.
Ms. Metzger's not going to speak. I'm Betty Winholts, and I would like to speak to the same topic, which is 7C, I believe, and maybe you will pull it. And then I'm also going to speak to 7F and G. But first, regarding the RINCON, they are asking for more money, and for two basic reasons. One is because they received more responses from the public than they anticipated, and they were more technical than they anticipated, so they would like more time and to hire some more technical people to respond. And the second is that they would like to extend the contract, in order to do that, six months. So this is where my confusion comes in. The letter is dated in August, and six more months would put the extension into late June or July, or February, late January or February, excuse me, I'm still in the summer. Yet they say they will be done by the end of the year, so there's not matching of the dates. So my question is, is this really a retroactive request from them that started back in June? So when is the real time that they will be reporting back to the public, and you've mentioned that you'll talk about that later, hopefully? And then I want to talk about, just for a real quickie, about RINCON's quality of production. I would suggest that they produced an inadequate DEIR, that there, that's partly why they received a lot of comments, because they left a lot of opening for people to critique. And I'm hoping that if you approve, and probably will, because Ring, you are not paying the bill, Vista's paying the bill, so it's likely that they will be extended this opportunity to go for six more months, but that you would make sure the quality of their product comes back better, both in terms of the EIR, what it's covering, the holes that they left out. And when they attend the public meetings, when they came before the Planning Commission, they were unprepared to answer questions. When they held a second public meeting on their own, it was a repeat of the first one. So the public did not feel like they were getting the benefit of what RINCON could have offered them in terms of the DEIR, and what would be expected. And then I would like to go on to 7F and 7G, which I think are related, because one's about approving the money for our paving, and the other one's about a company to oversee the paving. And so that just seems really odd to me that we have this middleman overseeing the paving, and maybe because it's such a large project, I don't know. Excuse me. But in the first 7F, it did have two different figures, and it talked about a $1.6 million, but then later it said the whole package was 4.5. So it's just justifying those, those, those figures, if you could do that. And then, I guess that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on the consent agenda? AGP, are there any raised hands?
No, Mayor Wickson, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. If there is no more public comment on the consent agenda, I will close it and bring it back to council. Does anyone wish to pull anything? To my left, to my right.
I do. I would like to pull 7C and 7G, I think it is.
Thank you. Anything else? That was the same for me, 7C and 7G, same for Councilmember Edwards. Thank you. With that, I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda items 7A through 7I, subtracting 7C and G.
Can I, can I do it? Even though I'm pulling it? Okay. Then I move that we approve items 7A, B, D, E, F, H, and I.
I second it.
Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. 7C, Mayor Pro Tim Landrum. Opposed? Thank you. 7C, Mayor Protem Landrum. If you don't mind, can I? Oh, sure. Thank you. Because Councilmember Edwards and I had the opportunity, as the subcommittee members, to have some conversations about the Vistra and RINCON contracts and things. So Mr. Singwald, I think there was some concerns about the continued contract and what that scope of work is and what that timeline looks like. And I know we were talking a little bit earlier about it, but if you could give us an idea of why we're going to fund this and how it's going to be funded, I think that might help.
Sure. Airline Singwald, Community Development Director. So the purpose for the contract amendment is, as the public commenter stated, the initial scope of work did not anticipate the volume and level of technicality of the comment letters on the draft EIR. In addition, RINCON is also under contract to prepare the master plan, and there is some additional work needed on the master plan that wasn't originally scoped and budgeted for. So that's the purpose for additional budget requests. As the city attorney announced earlier, the current timeline for RINCON to complete the final EIR is November. To address the comment or the question about is this request retroactive, it's not retroactive. So RINCON is currently working under the existing contract and budget, but they are very close to exhausting the available budget for response to comments. And again, this contract amendment would provide that necessary budget to complete the response to comments and finalize the EIR.
Thank you.
Yes. I understand that Vistra is paying for it, and I'm just curious, just because of trying to understand the process. So how many questions or comments were they expecting? Like, if they're requiring extra funds for the excessive numbers of comments, how many were they expecting? And how many over are comments are there?
So I went back and looked at the original proposal and scope of work. I don't recall a specific number. There was a number of hours that were budgeted for response to comments, and they are going to exceed the number of hours that were budgeted for response to comments. But I don't think it assumed a specific number of comment letters.
And if they are requesting additional funds for having to process the comments, the excessive number of comments, I think there were 1,000, does staff get additional funding? Because I'm sure that they're supposed to read the comments as well, as well as council. Do we all get additional funding?
So per our reimbursement agreement with Vistra, any time that I spend on the project reviewing, you know, draft responses and discussing the EIR, you know, comment letters with RINCON, I am charging those hours to the project, and the city is being reimbursed through reimbursement agreement for that cost on a time and materials basis.
And do you know about council?
I can't speak to that.
If we were to conduct a cost allocation study, then I believe the council's time can potentially be included. I don't believe that currently city council's compensation is part of the development agreement.
I wasn't expecting that there would be 1,000 comments either. Okay, I think that's all for right now.
I'm sorry, Mayor Protem. I just want to get clarification from Mr. Singwald. I think I read that it was 213 comments or 1,000 pages. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Just so I have it correct, so we all do. But my comment, to piggyback off of that, is that can't those comments be grouped in terms of the answers? Are they planning on doing that so that it's not 1,000 pages?
Yes. So on the EIR for a project of this scale, generally the approach, and the approach that RINCON is following, is to prepare what they call topical responses. There still needs to, you know, every comment letter needs to be reviewed and responded to, but when there are common themes in the comment letters, oftentimes the response to comments will point the reader back to a topical response that covers that general theme. However, still, even with that approach, RINCON is requesting additional budget for the time and cost of the response to comments.
So in other words, per the contract, there is nothing in there that is written into the contract that says, you know, you get to this many comments, and now it's additional money, or this many pages is additional money in terms of work for us, rather it's based on hours per the contract?
That's correct. So again, the initial scope of work assumed a certain number of hours for response to comments, and they're going to be exceeding that based on the volume of comments.
So is this extension and this funding specific, then, to just the EIR and not the, or is it including them working on the master plan?
So the main driver of the additional budget request is the response to comments, but there is additional work also that needs to be performed on the master plan. There is one contract with RINCON that covers both the EIR and RINCON's, you know, preparation of the master plan. And so this contract amendment would address both, but the majority of the cost is the response to comments.
Thank you. Questions?
Can I? I do have one question. In all of the questions that are asked, since there were quite a few, and it's found to be that there was missing, something missing from this report, if it's found to be that there is something missing, and it has required additional time from staff, because, as was mentioned, there's a lot of extra time that is taken to go through all of that. So my question is, I know there was a contract. However, if it's found that it's on RINCON for the reason that there are so many questions because there was missing information, is there, I don't know, what are our rights and what, I guess, I don't know if that's an attorney question, and I don't even know how we would determine that. But if it is found that it was inadequate, how can we recoup costs for all the time spent, the extra time spent, is what I'm getting at?
Looks like the city attorney wants to respond.
Sure. So the city, backing up to why we have a reimbursement agreement, we have the authority under California law to do cost recovery for processing development applications. Most of the applications that come into the development department, we have a flat fee that we charge based upon our fee schedule. Because of the enormous amount of time in this project, we're doing a time and materials basis. And so if RINCON needs to do extra work, then, you know, that gets billed to the applicant. If it turns out that the draft EIR, it's concluded that there needs to be some addendum circulated to it, or there's a mistake, as you were saying, then that also gets charged to the applicant. So we can't make up for the time that staff has spent on this, but we certainly are being reimbursed for the money.
Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. And I think that alludes to the concerns that even though we're being reimbursed, that the staff, because of the staff capacity hiring, RINCON and other consultances, we're still losing productivity of staff because of this. And I hope that we're just being mindful as this is dragging out so long and how that time is allocated from our staff, especially in light of the Coastal Commission letters, and what staff's role is and isn't in that.
Well, my other question was regarding the comment, I think it was Mr. Page, the comments. Is there any, are there any, Mr. Singwald, are there any responses that you would have to his three questions that he asked, the presentation that he had on the PowerPoint?
I did not make note of the specific.
Let me see.
Questions.
Requiring RINCON to review the Coastal Commission letter, oh, there are other locations, I guess he said that's being addressed. There's other locations that would allow a lithium battery outside of the populated areas. Require RINCON perform an EPA carbon footprint comparison for several best storage systems, not just lithium battery storage. And also, what is it? Finally, you should require, let's see, giving RINCON Association money to respond to the EIR without recognizing these three major flaws would be a social injustice. I don't know. I just thought maybe we should address his comments now, or should we, can we, is this a time when we could add this as more, a further request for them, for RINCON?
So I'll provide maybe a general response. So of course, RINCON is aware of and has reviewed the Coastal Commission letter on the best project. And to an extent, some of those comments do overlap with the EIR analysis. And, you know, as RINCON prepares response to comments and does work on the master plan, again, responding or addressing the Coastal Commission comments will be part of that. Now, with that said, the Coastal Commission comments do raise some very significant issues for the project, as we've heard, and we've shared with Vistra that these are significant concerns that they're going to have to respond to. But at the end of the day, RINCON is, are consulted, and they are going to assist the city as needed as we continue to process the application.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singwald. Any other questions from council? Any comments? With that, I will make a motion to approve item 7C and ask for a second.
Can I add to that?
A motion on the floor.
Oh.
I second it.
Thank you.
Can I make a friendly amendment to that, to add that we ask for additional funds for council's time?
I would not accept the friendly amendment. Welcome you to bring it as an additional item, or perhaps wait till after your meeting with the staff and then bring it back if you want. I'm going to leave my motion stand. Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. 7G, Mayor Protem?
Oh, 7G. Oh, 7G was, let me, I got off the page. Hold on one second. It is, oh, that is, I'm wondering why we need a consultant to manage the pavement project. That seems excessive to me, just from my basic understanding. Maybe, Mr. Qualick, you could help me to understand that.
Thank you for the question, Mayor Protem Landrum. And I would ask City Clerk Dana Swanson to pull up a couple of slides. I won't go through all of them, but I thought this question might come up because of some of the questions from the public. And I could certainly talk about the RFP. It doesn't sound like council's interested in hearing that right now. But the question is, why would we use a construction manager? Before I answer that, I will say that this is something we've done for other projects. We did this for our last paving project that commenced at the end of 2022 and concluded in August of 2023. That was, the contract for construction was with Pabbage Construction, but we did use pavement engineering to, as our construction management firm. And so there are really four main reasons that we identify for why we would want a construction manager on a pavement management project, such as the one that we'll be requesting a contract for later this evening. And one is just the time. City staff simply doesn't have the capacity to do the kind of work that's required to properly manage a construction contract. These kinds of projects are very fast-paced. We have a contractor who essentially is going to swoop in, be all over our streets. They're going to be closing down streets. They're going to have lots of different trucks. And there's really sort of an orchestration that must happen. I sometimes have terrible analogies, but if you'll entertain me for a moment, we're not, we're not really like a guy playing a guitar on the street here. This is sort of like a symphony. We have traffic control plans that are being put in place. We have materials testing that needs to happen. We are going to have very regularly and very commonly, and this is not just Moore Bay, but this is everywhere, things thrown at us by the contractors, saying, well, you know, that this condition in the field wasn't anticipated. You owe us more for this. Do you accept that or not? If not, I'm going to stop, and then I'm going to have a delay claim. So there are just all of these issues at once. And what's included as an attachment to the staff report is a scope for what the construction manager would do. And so it is about half of a year of a full-time person's work, because, again, this contract is a 90-day working, working 90 days, not calendar days, but 90, working day contracts. And so again, it's about 1,000 hours of personnel time put into that. And so one reason is that capacity, just we would not be able to fill those roles. And two is staff scope. Even if we tried, then we would not be able to do our day-to-day jobs. We would not be able to write our staff reports, respond to questions from the public, address issues in the field, go look at street trees and try to understand what some neighborhood concerns are, work with other contractors, develop new projects, et cetera, et cetera, work on finance documents and budget and things like that. So we have other work that we need to get done. Three, the construction manager comes with a level of expertise. This is their business. This is what they do. And we don't necessarily have all of that expertise on our staff. And so, again, very common for cities to hire a construction manager for this purpose. I could tell you the City of San Luis Obispo has a construction manager for their paving project. Other cities do the same thing. And not just for pavement management, but for other construction projects as well. And then finally, a construction manager adds a layer of protection for the city because they are onsite and they are, I don't want to frame it negatively, but they are engaging the contractor and stopping a lot of potential change orders right there. Again, I gave a scenario where maybe a contractor calls out an unforeseen condition in the field, and our construction manager is going to put a stop to that right there. It doesn't require a city staff person to be there every single minute. A truck is out next to every single truck that's going on, on that project at any given time. And we also think it's important to have a layer of protection between the city and the contractor. We have an objective third party that's looking at these things in case there's any kinds of claims against the city. We have an onsite expert who's observing all of the work and making sure things are done correctly. And I do want to just talk about what kind of scope the construction management is engaged in. It is not someone sitting in a trailer sipping on coffee or anything like that. I mean, these are folks that are, one, we have the orchestrator of all of it, who's making sure that, you know, the contractor isn't shutting down streets that they're not supposed to, or if there's a change, they're running all of that through the construction manager. And we have an inspector who's looking at the quantities that are being put down in the field to make sure that they're correct and that the city is getting what we paid for. Without that, it's very common for a city to get taken advantage of by a contractor who says, well, this is what we did, and we have no way of verifying that. That's what, that's the role of the construction manager. And then third, about $50,000 of this, 300 or so thousand, is materials testing. And that is something that frankly, the city just wouldn't even be capable of doing at all. That requires specialized equipment and expertise. And so that's being subbed out to a separate company called Earth Systems. And so that's being subbed out to a separate company called Earth Systems that's under the contract with Phillipin. So for all those reasons, that's why we would need a construction manager.
It seems like a lot of money and like almost, I mean, worth even considering hiring someone. I understand that there's a time crunch to get this done right away, though. But yeah, that's a big, a big number. And then also, the community has the recent experience of the construction manager at the sewer project where there were a lot of change orders. And there were, some of those things on your list were not helpful. So hopefully, this one will be better.
Any questions or comments from?
I have a question, and I don't know if anyone in this room knows the answer. I should have reached out to you earlier, Mr. Qualick. But do we know if there was a manager, a construction manager for, I think it was 2015 paving project? That's like a random question I threw at you. I don't expect you to know the answer.
I would assume that if it was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars at least, then yes. If it was a small project, like as an example, we've done some targeted pavement management work through small $60,000 contracts. And for that work, we are able to use staff because those are small repairs. It'll be in, you know, one area in the city, maybe a couple of streets, and they're working on some potholes and things like that. There, we don't really need a construction manager. But if it's one of these larger-scale projects, then I would certainly expect that we had a construction manager.
Okay. The reason I ask that random question, I'm getting strange looks from everyone, like, why would you ask that? Well, it was in my neighborhood. It was something that I worked on for many years to get our streets that were like missing. We were just like driving on dirt and kids were piling like a Jenga project with the pieces of pavement. But what happened was, we finally got the date and they paved our streets and it was done horribly. And it was such a shock to the residents and we were very, very upset that we waited so long and we got it done and then it was done not so well. And so I got on the phone and reported it immediately to the city and I had to say, like, within a week, it was, a lot of it was fixed. And so, you know, construction manager, if, how would that, if something, hopefully, it wouldn't get to the point where people were having to complain. Hopefully, they would catch that prior to a finished product that the residents are upset with. But would that be part of, I would assume that they would have to follow up even when a project is complete with any issues that residents are experiencing on their streets or, you know, complaints to the city? Would that be part of their job? Or is that now the city's job once it's complete?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Ford. And I would say if that's, and again, not having seen the work of that contractor, not even knowing who the contractor is, it sounds like either maybe there wasn't a construction manager or the construction manager was there, but maybe not really doing their job. And so during this RFP that we put out for construction management, it's a qualifications-based selection. It's based on the consultant's previous work history and references. And so we're very confident in Phillipin Engineering to be able to do this work. And so, but to your precise question, it depends. I mean, if the work came, if the complaints were coming in after, then those would obviously be received by the city because the consultant and the contractor are gone. But in some cases, like, let's say that were to happen in this project, we could potentially have the contractor come back and do the work on their own dime, depending on exactly what happened and, you know, what kind of evidence we have. I mean, I'll just say that there are sometimes common perceptions that the work wasn't done well and when in actuality it was. Because it doesn't always look as folks necessarily think it's going to look. A lot of times, we think it's going to look like a, just a beautiful slate of blacktop. I recall about a year or two ago, in our neighboring community of Cayucas, there was some paving work done there and I was seeing a lot of complaints on Nextdoor, which I occasionally do peruse. And so Eric Riddio, the former city engineer, and I went out and took a look there and really, there were sort of two sides of the street. And where the paving work was done, there was some overlap and there was sort of like a little rumbly bump that, you know, went away probably in a few months. It's just sort of a byproduct of the process. But people were complaining that it, you know, looked like Baghdad and that kind of thing. So now, that's not to discount your experience. I mean, we very may well have had a contractor that did not do a good job, and it sounds like that was the case. And so with, I'm confident that with an inspector on site that's qualified and good and that we trust and are good communication with them, that we'll be able to address those kinds of issues as they're coming up rather than after the fact.
Okay, thank you for that. I know that was a really random question. And just so you know, we had the, I don't know if the top slurry or whatever you call it, it was like several feet up our driveway and on other people's driveways and all over side, or not the sidewalk, but yeah, it was a mess. It was all over. So yes, I'm sure there are some imperfections that are natural, but there were some that were not so great. But thank you for clarifying that for me. I don't have any other questions regarding this item.
Thank you. And I would support Councilmember Ford's comments. I was here and it was probably one of the worst paving jobs I've ever seen in this city in the 45 years I've lived here. It looks like somebody painted it on. It was horrible. I would hope, and Mr. Qualick, who is overseeing the consultant? You or our engineers?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Wickson. That would be our engineers.
Thank you. I am thrilled that Susa Construction's doing this. I hope that our engineers keep a close eye on our consultants and that budget because I feel that there shouldn't be a whole lot of issue because they are phenomenal contractors and I have all the faith in them. I understand the need to have a consultant and I agree with Mayor Protem. After the consultants and the wharf, it's painful to keep doing this because we've had such a challenging experience with the change orders. And I'm just hopeful that that won't happen this time, having a, hopefully, more reputable please.
Yeah, I'll just comment that, Jesus, slipped my mind, that the contract with the consultants is on a time and materials basis. And, you know, that was brought up with Rincon. And it's the same case here with Phillipin. If there isn't a need for all those 90 workdays for some reason, then we won't be paying that full amount.
Thank you.
So that's something that our engineers and our Public Works Inspector in-house will be tracking.
Thank you. And I have all the confidence in Cindy and Austin overseeing that, so thank you. Any other questions?
That was going to be my next question, is how do you ensure that the 1,000 hours are tracked? And you just answered that, so. Yeah. And then I'm sure you've weighed out whether it would be more economical to hire a consultant to look at the trees and use our in-house engineers to oversee this project? You mentioned looking at, going out to look at trees and things like that, that they are actively doing.
Yeah, I apologize. That was kind of a random example that came to my head. I mean, our folks are called out into the field all the time to have a look at just a variety of different things that, I can't even think of an example right now. But, you know, I'll give one example. We have an area, I think on Napa or Shasta, where water is flowing down the road and there was roadwork done for some spot repair. And, you know, based on the pavement configuration now, the water goes and jumps the curb and it's creating damage on someone's property. And so we're looking at, so those little issues that are not big projects, they're not, I mean, things that no one even really knows we do, we're constantly addressing those. And so if we dedicated two or three city staff to do the work that an expert consultant is working on, I mean, everything else would stop. Because whenever the contractor would be on site, they would all have to be there. And then in addition to that, there is a lot of administrative and clerical work that goes into it that this consultant is handling as well. And so that would mean that there would be a draw on our admin staff in the office. And the admin staff, they're working on contracts and they're working on invoices. A lot of that would just be stopped or pushed back. So it just really wouldn't be feasible. It's not so much a question of, could we hire another person that would be able to handle all of this? The consultant's bringing in a team. So they're essentially bringing in like another team just for this job. We wouldn't be able to recreate that to be able to achieve what they can.
So let me.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Eva, sorry, Ms. Kimball.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I thought I should add to Director Qualick's comments. I think it's a good idea to hire a consultant and to oversee this very large project. We have not done this project for two years and this time, we are looking at over $4 million of paving and this is a lot of money and put on the streets. We certainly want to ensure the quality, not just for now and also into the future. I can speak from my own experience when I was a city manager, other smart cities, yes, no, we hardly ever have a consultant to oversee paving projects. But those paving projects were very, they're relatively small. And then even when they were small, they took all my staff time. And we couldn't, I couldn't get that much done because everybody is on the street to manage the paving projects and other things are not, you have to wait because these are important. And then also, in addition to that, even you have a very good contractor, which I believe just our contractor on the paving project is very reputable local contractor. Sometimes you still would want somebody to, the boost grounds experience or the expertise. I, one of the projects that we did in my other city, the paving finished and everybody was very happy, the quality passed inspection, the city engineer inspected, everything was good, to standards. But then a few weeks later, had a rain and then since there was a bubbling and then there's things that not, just you never really think about it. And then when we look into that, it turned out that it has been drought, has been dry for such a long time. And then now, after you, and then after winter storm, just so much rain and then the pavement just doesn't, seems disagree with the geology. So there's the things that you don't even think about, but I think that that time, we thought, well, had we thought about that, have we have expert like these, when I read their expertise, I did think that these kind of irregularities and somebody with paving experience with long-time super C paving jobs, they would be able to point out and on a field, in the field. And if not, then after the job finished, we have another layer of protection we can talk to, we can talk to these construction management folks that to ask, to help, to have them help double protect the quality of the work that our money paid for. So I think it's a good idea, giving the amount of the paving that were in place.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball. I agree with your support there. There are no further questions, comments? I will move approval of item 7G and ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Qualick. Moving on to 9A. Here we go, award the contract. I'm so excited about this. Mr. Qualick, I'm waiting.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Greg Qualick, Director of Public Works. And I'll ask the City Clerk Swanson to pull up the presentation. So the long-awaited pavement project, we have a couple of pieces to this presentation. I'd like to talk about some of our recent work and acknowledge our staff on that. And then talk a bit about the budget and funding for this project, some of the details. And then we do have Joe Reary from PEI to help us understand what our current pavement condition index is, our PCI, and talk us through some potential future scenarios. He'll go into some detail about strategies that we use here at the city to ensure that we get the best bang for our buck when we're doing paving work. It is something that we try to approach strategically so that we can stretch our dollars. So to begin with, in fiscal year 21, 22, the, how am I trying to say this? When the City Council was approving its fiscal year 21, 22 budget, which was in 2021, we allocated $1.4 million. And that project wasn't actually completed until August 2023. So I mentioned earlier, our last paving project commenced in the fall of 2022 and it was going well. And then the rains came in late December and then January. And it just was soaking and saturating the ground along South Bay Boulevard, which was the location of some of our repairs. And the contractor couldn't do the work until that dried out a bit. And so even though we completed the project, or, excuse me, we commenced the project in 2022, it wasn't completed until sometime later, so that there were some delays. But that was a year ago that it was completed, so it wasn't that long ago. We had digouts as part of that project. We did digout repairs on Main, Harbor, Beach, Pacific, South Bay, Coral, and San Jacinto. The idea was that we would do the digout work and do the surface sealing later, and that's going to be included in this project that we're bringing now. And then since then, we've done some of our own paving work. We took advantage of our contract with Pappich and did some work on Preston Lane. That was a Baghdad street, sorry Baghdad, but that was a really rough street. I mean, you couldn't hold a cup of coffee and drive down the road. It was so bad. And we took some grindings from the other projects and put an emulsifier on it and it's basically a functional road at this point. We paved all of Quintana Road in 2023. That was for the Wharf project and all the digging up of that road that we did. That said, that road was already in bad condition. And so the construction work that happened there as part of the Wharf project really accelerated the poor condition of the road. And it meant that when the contractor was repairing it, it wasn't just a simple job in some cases. The road had to be rehabbed. And so we did over a mile stretch of Preston. I'm sorry, Quintana. We paved the bike path. We paved Harbor Street as part of the Transit Hub project. So you'll see in Mr. Reary's presentation later, how do you fund paving? One way is through grants. You don't get a whole lot of grant money for just maintaining your pavement. And we certainly do that with SB1 as the City Council approved that earlier tonight. But sometimes you can get grant money to do a different project that includes paving and that's just a clever way to fund paving and that's something we did last year. And then we did our parking lot rehab, which was the police parking lot as well as the Lila Kaiser parking lot. So that was earlier this year. And then we also did some targeted small contract work. The maintenance division managed a lot of that. They did a great job. It was around $180,000 with three contracts that we had. We took care of a variety of areas in the Radcliffe neighborhood. There are some steep slopes in that neighborhood. And the trash trucks will stop to pick up trash and then start again. And because of the slope and the weight of that truck, it just pulls up the pavement. So we took care of a lot of the issues there, not all of them. We did some work on Greenwood, Bolton, Laurel and Questa, and then also Jamaica, Panorama, Island and Tide. And then on an ongoing basis, the maintenance division repairs potholes, they do some digout work, they do skin patch work that gets requested as part of work orders through our online work order system that the public can find on the city's website. We generally do that work weekly. Because of limitations with equipment we have, they can't do large projects, but they can certainly fill our dump truck and do as much as they can. And we're really appreciative of the work that they do there. So that was just recent paving work that we've done in the past two years or so. The current budget and project is a consolidation of three fiscal years of City Council allocation. So there's fiscal year 22, 23, 23, 24, and 24, 25. And what remains after you cut out everything that was spent And what remains after you cut out everything that was spent is around $5 million. And there are some benefits to how we approach this, rather than doing three separate projects, consolidating them into one. The more money that we put into paving, the better pricing we get. And so we're able to leverage that in this project compared to other projects we've done in the past. In some cases, we're like $700,000. A lot of times with these larger projects, what you're paying the big money for is the mobilization of the, of the equipment and the labor. And when you consolidate it, you're paying the same cost for that $5 million project as you would for a $1 million project. So if you do a $1 million project five times, you pay for mobilization five times. And here, we're only paying for it once, which is a benefit to the city. It's also more efficient for staff. We did one RFP for construction management. We did one design, and by design, I mean the plans and specifications that went out to bid, and we did one bid rather than doing three. So just wanted to show some of the benefits of taking that approach. Where does the money come from? There, I believe there's still some ARPA money in this and we have plenty of Q and E in here, the SB1 grant. And then, as council knows, some, some reserve money was pulled to pay for this project just a couple of months ago. That was voted on by the City Council. So there are a variety of funding sources for this project. We put out to bid the construction component on July 18th and it closed on August 15th. Our engineer's estimate was a bit high. There's a variety of reasons for that. But it, that estimate was 4.6 million. We had three bidders with the low bid at 3 million. I think our high bid was a little bit closer to 4 million. That's good news. We got a pretty, a pretty good bid. And the bidder, as Mayor Wixson mentioned earlier, is Sousa Construction and they're out of San Luis Obispo. And for my last slide, this is the question that I've been getting a lot, is how were our roads chosen? And the short story is the city employs a critical point management strategy. And Mr. Joe Reary is going to describe that in his presentation. So I won't go into it in depth, but it's really a strategy that we undertake to try to stretch our dollars. I'll just kind of give one example. If, if a road is, let's say, at a 70 rating and it costs $500,000 to repair, but it's also the same cost to repair it at a 60 rate, rating, again, $500,000. But if it goes to a 59 rating, now it's a million dollars because you have to employ a totally different method of rehab. Well, then it's worth it for the city to let that road deteriorate a bit and address another road that is on the cusp of going to that more expensive treatment. And so we, we look at all levels of treatment across the city that we can employ for roads that are about to hit that cusp. So we don't repair roads to a level of expense where they could actually last a little bit longer at that same expense. So I think Joe is probably going to explain that in a much better way than, than I did. I will say, we did not use critical point management to choose all the roads that are in this project. We have been responsive to some requests that have come in where people have told us, you know what, you've really got to come look at our road, it's terrible. And we did, and it was. And one example of that is the alleyway that's between Morro Bay Boulevard and Pacific, specifically closer to the police station and just south of the police station. One is South Street, which is, I believe, our last remaining dirt road. And that's, that's one that we want to take care of. And so there are some instances where, again, we just took a look and made a call on it. But if we did our whole program that way, we would not be stretching our dollars in a very wise way. So we tried to strike a balance on, on those choices. So with that said, I am going to ask Mr. Reary to come up and give his portion of the presentation.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, pleasure to be with you. My name's Joe and I'm with the pavement engineering and I'm an engineer with them. And I'm pleased to be able to talk to you a little bit about a subject that I really like talking about and that's pavement. And I have to think that just watching some of your head nods and, and whatnot, that you too are also interested in pavement. So let's, let's get started with things. Okay, I've got some goals that I want to try and go over. I want to give some background on, on pavements. And so we're going to dive into what I call pavement 101. And then we're going to review different pavement management principles, things that we apply as we're thinking about and managing pavement. Now, we're going to go into the assessment findings, what we found out about Morro Bay, where you're at, and report to you on that. And then we want to talk about funding needs and then provide some recommendations to think about. So let's jump into each one of these, item by item. So when we talk about a pavement, we're talking about a structure that we build on top of some kind of soil. It can be good soil, bad soil, whatever it might be. And that structure is supposed to help with the loading that's on top of the pavement. The higher the loading and the worse the subgrade is, the thicker the section needs to be in order to be able to bridge it. It's not just one section will work everywhere. You have to be able to account for the amount of traffic it gets and what it's being built on. Now, this is really an important slide. I want you to like memorize that, that orange line there. That's called the deterioration curve. And we're looking on the vertical axis at the pavement condition. And then we're looking across at time on the bottom, the X-axis. And pavement, asphalt pavement does not deteriorate linearly. It deteriorates just like this S-shaped curve that we see. And we've seen that before. We'll drive down a brand new road and we drive down it, we think everything's fine. Then one day, we look at the road and go, wow, wait a minute, when did this get so bad? And, and that's because that pavement looks good for a while and then it falls off quickly. That steep part of the curve right there is, we call those the pavements at risk because they're falling fast in that area. And so remember this curve because we're going to come back to it a couple of times because it's going to help us in, in some of our guiding principles. Now, when we talk about asphalt pavements, they deteriorate two different ways. One way that they deteriorate is with environmental forces and the other is by loading or, or the fatigue that will happen. So let's look at each one of these individually. So when we talk about the environmental deterioration that happens, when we build a pavement, the asphalt portion of it, it's made up of all different size aggregates, different sized rocks and sand that get held together by a binder. And that binder is, is oil. And that oil is holding everything all together. Well, as it, that oil is exposed to the, the sun and oxidizing effects of the water, it starts to lose volatiles. And so it starts to shrink. And as it starts to shrink, cracks begin to form. And as those cracks begin to form, that opens up areas where water can start getting in. And then when the water gets in and everything starts going really fast because it gets into the subgrades and start causing additional deterioration. So that's environmental effects. But the other way that pavements deteriorate is by loading. And one of the best ways that we know how to put this together, where we put this together many years ago, trying to help convey how, what's loading? It's not the busyness of the road, it's really what that road is carrying. So this gives you some, an example of different kind of heavy vehicles and tries to put it into something that we can relate with. So we took a, a Tesla Model 3 and we said, let's compare a Tesla Model 3 that we're seeing on the roads all the time now. Some of us in this room may own one. And, and let's compare it to different kind of vehicles that are out there. The first one we can look at is a two-axle vehicle. That would be like your delivery trucks. Amazon, UPS, FedEx, those, those vehicles are, are in our neighborhoods at least once a day as they're driving around, seven days a week. If you go down to the bottom of the graph, if we look at a fully loaded five-axle truck that might be delivering groceries to Vaughn's or Albertson's or wherever, that's equal to almost 15,000 Teslas. And so just one of those trucks going by is equal to that many vehicles going by. So it's environmental impact and loading. So these are different types of common distresses that we can see. And it helps us to be able to read the tea leaves of, of pavement. The first one on the, on the left is distress called weathering or ravelling. And this is the top part of the pavement beginning to wear off. So some of the fines and the large, the smaller sized aggregates are getting worn off. That's from traffic driving on it. It's also from water running across it. And so it starts to weather and ravel and gets rough looking. The next slide, next to it, transverse cracking and longitudinal cracking, that's that pavement that's starting to shrink. And so it's going to shrink at the weak joints. And the paving joints where the paver goes back and forth are the first place that it's going to start cracking as the pavement begins to start shrinking. As that progresses, we start seeing what's called block shrinkage cracking, where we start seeing blocks begin to form in our pavement. And those blocks are roughly about 20 by 20 squares and then they get down to 10 by 10 and 5 by 5. They just keep breaking up smaller and smaller and smaller. Those three different types of distresses that we just reviewed are all environmental, which means you could build a road or a parking lot and never see a car and you will see those kind of distresses on that road or on that pavement. The fourth one is alligator cracking. I don't know who came up with it, but it just looks like alligator skin and so therefore we call it alligator cracking. That's a fatigue or a loading type of a distress. It's the constant flexing, flexing, bending, bending of the pavement. And it's cracking from the bottom up to the top. So if you think the top looks bad, if we could look underneath, flip it over like a pancake, it would look even worse. Okay, so when we evaluate pavements, which is what we did, we looked at every single one of the streets in, in Morro Bay. We rated them on a system that's been used since World War II that was used to assess parking, or airport runways and has been refined. And as engineers, this is how we communicate to each other about our pavement conditions. And it's on a scale from 100 down to zero. 100 is a perfect pavement, no distresses. Zero is, it's really bad. It's got so many distresses that it's, it's just gone. No more life, no more serviceability in the pavement. And you can see how there's a gradation with it, excellent all the way down to, to failed. We drew a line at 60 because as we get into the details, that's where Morro Bay is right now. And if you think of our deterioration curve, that's, you're right at that really steep part of the curve. Okay, we looked at all of these different distresses. We could really spend a lot of time going into those and it's really fun, but I'll hold you back on that, okay? But let's just look at some pictures and maybe that might mean something a little bit more. So this is an example of a pavement that's 100, just paved, nothing wrong with it, it's brand new. And it's a PCI or a pavement condition index of 100. This is one that is 85. And this is where we're seeing the weathering and ravelling. The pavement looks rough, but there's no cracking yet in it. And then we get down to a 70 and this is where we start seeing that longitudinal and some transverse cracking begin to form. That pavement is shrinking and so we're seeing the cracking. And then this is one that's a 60, and again, I wanted to put in the 60 so we can get an idea of what a 60 looks like. You're starting to see the blocks begin to form around the pavement. And if we go to a 50 or 51, those blocks are actually beginning to crack around the edges and that's where the alligator cracking is beginning to form. This is an example of a 38, so not in great shape. You can see edge to edge cracking. I really like this slide. This is a 28. And what's really fun, and if you want the roads to start talking to you, if you look at one side of the road and the other side of the road, you see a really big difference. And so when I see stuff like this, I go, hmm, I wonder if there's a truck route on this road or maybe the buses are running one way versus the other way. And, and so it's something to pay attention to in here. And then this just reminds us why we have roads in the first place. Okay, so let's review some pavement management principles. The biggest principle, the thing that we have to remember is that when we're managing pavements, we want to do the right treatment to the right, let me make sure I'm getting this right. The right treatment, I'm used to seeing a slide over here. I don't read so well over here. Seeing the right treatment to the right pavement at the right time. And then we like adding to that the right materials. So let's talk about that, going back to our deterioration curve. And in just graphically, this is what this means. So here's our deterioration curve. We've talked about pavements are in different condition, that's that, that vertical access. And you do different treatments at different times along the pavement deterioration curve. The first treatment you're going to see there is crack sealing. So as the pavement's beginning to crack, you want to be able to seal up those cracks, keep the water out of it. And that's a very cost-effective treatment for the pavements. Down on the very bottom of the curve is reconstruction. The pavement's completely worn out, it needs to be reconstructed. Just to illustrate the point of how important doing the right treatment to the right pavement at the right time is, you wouldn't take a pavement that's in good condition and reconstruct it. You wouldn't also conversely take a pavement that's in really bad condition and just crack seal it. Both, both of those options are not cost-effective for managing pavement. You with me? Okay. All right. For as long as I've been doing this, there's three different kind of approaches that you can use to manage your pavements. The first is taking what's called a best-first type of an approach. That means that you're going, and this assumes that you don't have enough money to be able to do all, meet all the needs of your pavement out there. So how are you going to select streets? How are you going to manage what you have and what are you going to do? Well, one option is, is you can just focus on the really good streets and just keep spending your money on the good streets. That isn't sustainable over time. It is a management style and I have seen it, but it's going to end up with all your pavements in, a bunch of good pavements and a bunch of really bad pavements without anything in the middle. The other type of a approach is a worst-first type of an approach. That is just saying, I'm going to take all of my streets, I've got PCIs on every single one of them, and I'm going to line up those PCIs from the lowest all the way up to the highest. And I'm just going to keep working off the list, picking my worst streets in town and keep doing that. That is, it's a more common type of an approach, but it also is not very cost-effective because what you end up doing is spending the maximum amount of money on every single street. So you're only covering, you're covering less square footage every single year with the amount of budget that you have. And so the approach that we like to recommend and the approach that, that Morro Bay has adopted is to use more of a critical point management style. And let's look at that graphically to be able to understand what that means. And so we go back to our deterioration curve and now we're seeing all the different kinds of treatments that we can do along that curve. But we've divided up the curve in different sections that really tie together with, with the amount of money for each, each of those treatments cost. And so what we're looking to try and do is manage the pavement and select pavement that are, that are in those red circled areas. Those are the areas where the pavement, the treatment can still be effective on that treat, on that pavement. But if we let it fall down any worse, in any worse condition, then that treatment becomes ineffective. And so critical point management is, is you're selecting from each part of the deterioration curve. You're not just focusing on the best, you're not just focusing on the worst, but you're taking areas of each part of the curve and, and using your limited funds on those dollars. And I wanted to point out the cost impact with this slide for each of those different treatments and why you would want to even consider an approach like this. If you look at the upper treatment in more of the If you look at the upper treatment in more of the light maintenance area, you're going to spend anywhere from six to eight dollars per square yard to be able to treat those streets. If you look down at the reconstruction area, you're going to spend around 200 to 260 dollars per square yard to be able to treat those streets. And so you're trying to group those streets together and pick from each one of those different areas. Make sense? Okay. All right. So let's jump into the assessment findings because I think this will get really interesting. Okay. The city of Morro Bay manages 53 and a half centerline miles. So a centerline mile is just down the center of the street. Think of the yellow line or the white line down the center of the street. That's, that's what a centerline mile is. We don't pay attention to how many lanes are out there, just how, what the center is. So 53 and a half centerline miles equates to, if we were to end up lining up all those streets from end to end, how far would we get? Well, if we went north on Highway one, out 46, and then up 101, we would end up somewhere between Bradley and San Ardo in order to just get an idea of where 53 and a half miles would take you. Going south, we would go into San Luis. We get on 101 and we would go south. And we would keep driving south until we were at the south end of, of Santa Maria at about the East Clark exit, right there in Orchid. So again, if you just think about the distance, that's a long distance to be able, that's a lot of roads. Over eight million square feet of pavement. That's 150 football fields. And your system wide average is a 60. That means that's the average. Some are better, some are worse, but your average is a 60. If you needed to replace the whole street system, it would be $206 million. That's without sidewalks, that's without traffic signals, that's no curb and gutter. That's just the pavement. Okay. So what did we find out? We've got different functional classifications. Your 60 breaks down into arterial collectors and residentials. Arterials are the very busy, busy streets. Your residentials are your locals and the collectors get us in between those two. And so your, your arterials are at a 66, 61 for collectors. Residentials are at a 58. 58 of your system, 58% of your system are residential streets. We thought that since we had the data, you might want to see this in terms of how, how has Morro Bay been doing over time? And having a historical context really helps us when you're trying to figure out what to do. And so we rated your system and reported in 2020, 2022, and in 2024. And you can see that the overall, we've gone from a 66 down to a 60. And you can see how each one of the different classifications has, has deteriorated as well. I would want to point out that between, when we reported in 2022, we were anticipating that the, the PCI, according to what the budget was going to, the, the projected budget expenditures were going to be. We were anticipating that we would be more around a 61 or a 62 is what we were anticipating. But the rains got the better of us and so we saw some additional deterioration. This is how it breaks down. And you can see that the majority of, we grouped all of the pavements together by square footage in each of these different 10-point categories. You can see that the bulk of your pavements are between your 80 and 61. Even if you include down to 51, there's a lot of pavements. But that, the biggest spike right there, 36% of your pavement, that's, that's at that most critical point or the steepest part. Yeah, the, the highest risk part because that's where your steepest part of the curve is, right there. You have not very many streets that are down in the, you know, the below the, the 20 category. But you do have a, a good range that, that go from 60 down to 21. This might be difficult to see, street by street by street. So let's just get like the image of what we're trying to see here. And again, it's emphasizing, if you look at it, the yellow line is the, the fair line or that is the, where most of your pavements are. And so this is the whole city. And we looked at North Morro Bay. And again, we're seeing mostly predominantly yellow. And then you look at South Morro Bay again. We've got a lot of pavements that are, that are at risk, that, that need attention. Okay. So let's look at the funding needs. We just put together this one graph. Each one of these different scenarios, we ran a, we started with a 60 PCI and said, okay, let's look at different funding scenarios to just get an idea of what, what kind of needs the city of Morro Bay pavements need. The green line would be if, what if we took the whole system and we put it into a maintenance mode? And so we, we expended a large amount of money and we put it in the, in the, into a more of a maintenance condition. So in other words, we're trying to employ like a, a best first type of a scenario here. Let's push all the pavements up in good condition. You would have to expend almost $57 million to get it up that high. And then the cost to maintain it would be about $2.1 million per year for the next five years. Looking at the, the purple line, let's look at that one. What would be the cost to maintain your pavement at a 60? And the cost would be, according to our projections and looking at the current dollars, the unit prices for, for the kind of work that would be needed would be about $4.5 million. The costs have gone up since we last reported. We reported that to maintain your system at a 63 was only $2.8 million per year because of the inflation that we're seeing, not only with pavements, but we're seeing it with milk and eggs and gas and everything. It's, you know, inflation is getting us. But $4.5 million is what we're seeing. If you wanted to increase it by five, it would take $7.5 million per year. These, these numbers are per year. If you didn't spend anything on your pavements, you could expect that your pavement deteriorate, would deteriorate to a 48 over the next five years. And according to the budget, the numbers that, that we received and, and ran the scenarios on, we're anticipating that the city would have about $1.36 million, $1.4 million per year. It's not enough. It's, you can see that we're in the golden line there, that we are losing the battle. And it's projected to, if you spend that much per year, you're going to be at a 53. That's usually the part of the presentation where the floor opens and I fall to the monster that juice me up and I'm dead. So, but anyway, let's talk about maybe give a little bit of ray of hope somewhere in, in this. And that's to review some recommendations. Number one, keep updating your pavement management system. It's a great communication tool. It allows you to be able to speak easily to residents, to yourself and among yourselves about where you're at. And so be able to look at that history. You're going to be able to look at the impact of what the, what this year's project is going to do for your streets and how it's going to be able to improve your PCI. So that's some of the things that you want to, one of the things you want to be able to do. Going forward, really developing more of a multi-year kind of a plan. Look at this streets, this group of streets are going to be done this year. This group of streets is going to be done this year. This group of the streets is going to be done this year. That allows you to be able to take advantage of some of the things that were addressed earlier, where you can focus on grouping your projects together, save mobilization costs, as well as be able to get information out to the utility companies and say, next year we're coming in and doing this, the year after that, we're doing that. And you can count on us doing this in the third year. And that will let them do their work so that after you do your work, they don't come back and cut up the street, which is always a bummer. Because you have limited funds and I need to let you know, this isn't the city I've had to stand in front of and tell them that you have limited funds. It's, it's everywhere in California without exception. No one has enough money. But focusing your limited funds on the streets that have the, the most need are the, is really the way to go. That way you're serving the, most of the residents. Morro Bay is unique in that you've got a great tourism element. And so keeping those streets looking good is just going to make people feel good coming into town so that you, you make people love coming to Morro Bay. And so I know it's a favorite place of ours to bring, bring our friends when, when they come into town. Leveraging limited funds with grant funds. You can, you only have to pay pennies to the dollars for, for grant funding. And so doing the grants is a, is a positive thing. Looking for and managing your projects so that you hold off streets that are grant eligible until they can be funded with grants. And so you're, you're selecting certain streets, certain ways. Because not every street is eligible for a grant. You can't get a grant for, for instance, for a residential street. I've never seen one in all the years I've done it. It's, they only are on streets that are registered and listed with, with Caltrans on their, on their, they call it their CIR map. And then the other option is to consider some additional funding sources. I've seen cities use refuge impact fees, our garbage trucks. Our streets are designed for, when we initially designed it, we designed it for one garbage truck trip per, per week. And that is almost 9,000 Teslas running back and forth each time a garbage truck goes by. Now we're running three, so we're consuming the pavement life a lot faster with that. So I've seen cities use refuge impact fees, utility impact fees when they cut into your street and, and cause the, the street to deteriorate faster than what was anticipated. They will, I've seen cities use that and use that. And then they also use sales tax measures and, and parcel tax measures to be able to generate additional funding for, for their streets. And that takes it to the end of this presentation, but you're going to jump in.
I'm just going to jump in very quickly to say that the item at hand for the city council is a request to approve a word of contract Aseusa for the pavement project. And so we'd be happy to take questions on that, which we talked about earlier in the presentation or anything that Joe just presented.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I think you'll probably be here for a few minutes in case we have any questions. I appreciate it. Questions for staff? My left. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. I, I have a few here. My first question is, I saw that Preston Lane, you had mentioned that Director Qualick as being one of the streets that was identified to get repaired, or I should say, to put a street there. And my question is, is have we taken, as a city, have we taken action to make sure that we can mitigate flooding in that area in the future before we put money towards putting in a street? If it's, you know, if we have another huge winter flood and it takes the PCI level down to whatever. Like I'm, I'm just, that's the one street that sticks out to me. And I, I, I feel for the people that live on that street. I want them to get a, a street, but I'm just curious what our plans are.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Ford. So the city has taken some steps to repair storm drains that were impacted by the storms or that in some cases outright failed from the storms. And those were kind of low hanging fruit. And they've certainly helped in smaller rains along Main Street. There were some businesses there that were getting flooded. And after the city repaired the storm drain on a small contract, the flooding stopped. So in that way, yes. In another way, the larger question of why the Morro Creek floods is, I mean, that is going to be a multi-year project, potentially a 10-year project that involves hopefully partners from outside of the city that include the county. And we've been in conversations with the Resource Conservation District here in town as long as, as well as the estuary program to talk about how we could potentially divert water away from the creek during floods, potentially into agricultural land. That's a strategy that the estuary program has been successful with, with regards to the Choro Creek. But I, I would just want to emphasize that that's going to take many years to figure out. You know, if this were LA, we would probably just install a concrete channel all the way through Morro Creek. That's just not, that's not the central coast and no one's suggesting that. So the solutions have to be a bit more creative and have to involve other regional partners. So the short answer is, I mean, the city is still at risk of flooding in all of the FEMA flood zones.
Thank you. I, I do have a couple of other questions. I apologize. Jo, Jo?
Yeah.
Yeah. You had mentioned that you've never seen residential streets get grant money. And my curiosity started to, you know, kind of started spinning. And I'm curious if any residential streets that have ever, that are designated safe routes for schools, if that would put them in a different category? Or if there, if that's still never happened in your, that you've ever seen?
So safe routes for schools, the money that is available can be used on residential streets, but you don't see the money really going to paving? What it does is it improves the, the curb ramps, it improves the striping, but they, there's never money to be able to pave the street?
Okay. So additional grant money would never be, couldn't be considered on top of, like if it is a designated safe? Because that, my concern is, you know, bicycles and those things like hitting pot. If there's a really gnarly street and the city can't afford to, to replace it. So have you ever heard of any additional grant money that could go towards something like that? If it's been designated?
Usually what I'll see, and that's a great question, Councilmember Ford. What I usually will see is more of a partner, partnership being going on where you'll, you'll see this one grant that will come out and we'll be able to do some kind of multimodal kind of improvement on the roadway or a safe route to school. And then the, the local agency will then contribute additional money towards that. And then the two accomplishes a much better product than just one or the other.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I have one other question that's, I always love to throw out silly situations. But, you know, looking through ancient times, we still have roads that are there from, you know, back in the, you know, hundreds of thousands. We have like really, really old roads, right? That exist in this world. They're still around through floods and earthquakes and all the things. And people are still driving on them with their heavy trucks. And my question is, why are we continuing to do roads the way we are when they wear so quickly? And we're looking at climate change, we're looking at more storms, we're looking at heat, we're looking at all these things. So my question is, down the road, are we looking at ways to address that? Because I feel like we're just kind of doing the same thing. I mean, there are some improvements, don't get me wrong. But I'm just kind of curious because it's a lot of money to go into something to keep it smooth for a ride and for cyclists and for walkers, or pedestrians, as you call them. And so is there something that you have witnessed that's coming along that's going to reinvent roads? Or I'd love to hear your insight.
Great question. And yes, there are a lot of roads out there that are lasting a lot of, a long, long time. The, the short answer is it, it comes down to money. And so we're, we're looking at the, the risk reward and trying to balance where we want to draw. And so we're looking at the risk-reward and trying to balance where we want to draw the line. And in the United States and in California, we've drawn the line that we're going to use asphalt roads and we're going to hope that they last 20 years. And so we're going to design them for 20 years is what they do. And as we saw, asphalt roads deteriorate environmentally and fatigue-wise. And so we could spend more. We do have some roads on our freeway systems and even in the agencies that are concrete. And concrete roads will last, I've seen great concrete streets that are 100 years old. And, I mean, they're not perfect-perfect, but they ride a lot better than some of the asphalt roads. The problem is, is concrete, you're going to spend five times more on the road. And so when we have limited dollars, we've got to do what we can to get there. Now, you talked about innovation. Oh, yes, there's all kinds of innovation going on. Some of the, some things we are kind of, are flash-in-the-pan innovations that they say, oh, this will fix all the roads and it'll be awesome, it'll be great. And then you realize it didn't pan out at all. Some of the things that are coming out now that I've seen are your recycling. And so we're trying to use the existing aggregates in place and recycling them in place. And so we're not taking out all the old bad stuff and bringing in new stuff, all the trucking costs, everything associated with it. I mean, your mind can work and work that way. But what we're seeing is, is let's reuse it. And we're being forced to do that in California because no one wants any new quarries built. And so our aggregate sources, the rock quality is actually becoming less and less and less. I mean, unfortunately, in our, in the central coast area where we live, beautiful place, wonderful weather, everything's great, but our aggregates are the worst. And as a result of that, it's one of the reasons why you've got to watch and do the quality control that you're hiring to be done on your products because, you know, corners can be cut and bad things can happen. And so, but the other thing that happens with pavements is, we really don't know how well it's going to work until we get about 20 years down the road. And so we'll employ something new and be watching it to see what can happen. It's actually, we're actually have tried to do that a little bit on this project and use methods that we've used for years and years to be able to address. The roads all had a structural deficiency to it, to them, and so they required more aggressive-type treatments. Well, there wasn't enough money, so how do we spread that out to be able to make it work? And so we employed strategically placed digouts where we're removing and replacing bad areas and then addressing the ride quality and then trying to seal up the road with a cape seal over the top of it so that it'll help preserve that road for as long as possible on these roads. And so, again, trying to use value engineering-type treatments and just clever ways of trying to address what's going on. My mind is going crazy, but I better stop.
We could talk all night about this. We really could.
I know. We could get into fabrics.
We don't want to do that to you all. But thank you. I know, I appreciate that. And I think you gave our presentation la, last year, was it, or a couple of years ago?
Yeah, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, you were here, and I appreciate you putting things in layman's terms for those of us who are not experts, however passionate about pavement. So thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to remind council, we're getting late. We're still on our first topic, and this is about awarding the contract. So if we can keep the questions to that. Councilmember Edwards, questions?
Actually, I just want to say thank you for the same reason that Councilmember Ford just mentioned, is put it into terms that made it really easy for me to understand and the people in this room at home watching. So thank you very much for that. Recognizing what the mayor just said, I don't have any major questions. I think something, just maybe this is simple, but I just kind of want to get it out to the community. Mr. Qualick, is how do we usually go about notifying the residents when we're going to be doing work on the street outside of, you know, the notice signs being put up that we're seeing around town right now?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Edwards. So we contractually put that on to the contractor to do, and so it really depends on what the nature of the notification is, but if they have to go door-to-door and let people know to make sure they're, to keep their cars off the road, for example, because there's going to be paving work. So they do all those notifications.
I have one question. On one of the slides that you showed towards the end of your presentation, you were talking about ways to help fund paving. Well, the one that intrigued me was the one that has to do with refuse fees. And I'm just wondering, does anybody do that around here or? Yeah?
Yeah, there are.
The City of Morro Bay has a fee on our solid waste collection in the city.
I did not know that.
That comes to the city as general fund, but the justification for that is in part of the impacts to the roadways from the trash trucks.
Well, thank you. Somehow that had escaped me. That's great. Thanks.
Mayor Wixem? You, with the state of the roads and highways in California, you are, must be very busy.
I, let's see. I was going to ask Director Qualick if you have, you and your staff have prepared for the future, like, for, do you have a plan for the next roads that are going to be addressed?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. The list that we have for this large project was a three-year plan that our former city engineer, Eric Rideo, put together, and so we're using that now. So when this project is completed, one of our goals will be to put together a plan for the next few years.
Okay. But this project is only for one year? Oh, no, it was three years, so we're, this will, okay. And then also, you should have mentioned the mobilization and how that saves money because that helps with the consultant, that theory, if that theory is correct. And I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll hold my questions with them. I'm going to open public comment on this item. Betty Winholz, do we get to see the list of streets?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers and city staff. My comment is similar to the last one, just that Director Qualick's slideshow as well as this last presentation, it would have been great if that was in the packet, the public packet, because we weren't availed of that information until tonight. And unless it's posted somewhere, we can't avail it in the future. So we just urge that those type of presentations are in the agenda packet ahead of time for the public. Thank you.
Michelle Esther-Caterrey, Morro Bay, staff and councilmembers. With a lot of the streets up on Panorama failing, which they've been failing for decades, how or if this company can help prevent that continuous failure, which is costing the city a lot of money? There's been discussion of possibly making it a one-way so that, you know, we can maybe stop some, slow down some of the traffic so, you know, you're not pulling off onto the dirt shoulder and eroding that, trying to get people across. The other thing is, there's like, because there's so much slippage on North Morro Bay and some of the other areas because of water, how much is that costing the city annually to repair those areas? And is there a better solution, like shoring up some of those, you know, the property above it? Because ultimately, it winds up washing down and collecting on tide in Main Street and causing more issues. So that was my question. Thank you.
AGP, are there any raised hands?
No, Mayor Wixem, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you.
Am I too late? Apropos to what she just said about vehicles driving off and eroding the side of the road, I wanted to point out, if anybody hasn't noticed it, that that seems to happen a lot on the golf course road, which, by the way, is a major tourist draw. And it's just in dreadful condition. It looks like rats have chewed the side of the road all around there, so I hope something can be done.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to council and close public comment. I know I can share that the golf course and that area is all state parks, it's not the city's roads, it's their responsibility to do that. Mr. Qualick, any opportunity to address the question about Panorama, or, yeah, Panorama with the runoff and slippage and those things?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. I can address that briefly, and if the council's interested in maybe a more technical discussion, I could ask Cindy or Austin to come up and speak on this. But as we all know, Panorama is a road that is in an area where there's some sliding soils underneath. And so the, you know, a long-term solution to that, to that problem may be more expensive than it's worth to just maintain it at the level that we do currently. There's also proposed development on some parts of Panorama that, you know, we may have a developer in a situation where the city has asked that developer to upgrade the streets. And so I wouldn't want to proactively do repairs in that area without knowing what kind of work is going to be done there in the near future, if it is at all. So I'm not sure if there's more detail on that that we're looking for.
No, thank you. I just wanted to be able to address that as far as the runoff goes. And so question back to Councilmember Ford's comments. Oh, before we get to that, do we have a slide with the streets on it?
We don't, and, you know, we've changed this staff report over a couple of times, and it wasn't an earlier version of it, and I think we were going to put it in the presentation, and they didn't. What I'd like to do is post that in the hot topics section of the website later this week, and so we can get a list of the streets at least, possibly a map, so that any member of the public can go there and see if their street is on there. We do talk a little bit in the staff report about how part of this project is to do the sealing work over the digout work that already happened on Harbor, Pacific, Main, Coral, and a couple of other areas of the city, South Bay. But I don't see in here that we detailed every street that was going to be treated with this project.
Thank you for that. And I'm assuming that there, it's all subject to change as, and that would segue into my question that Councilmember Ford was sharing about Preston Lane. You talked about this being a three-year plan that had been done by Mr. Rideo, and so I'm wondering if there's modifications that potentially are made as this project begins or once we're locked in, we're locked into those streets and that's it? Because I share that concern, and I appreciate you recognizing the council's comments over the last year about addressing some of those streets that we know would never get addressed and finding a way to start working on some of the north end of town. But I also don't want to see, as much as I love everybody in Preston Lane, I'm very concerned until we can mitigate some of that flooding that we would just be spending money foolishly.
Thank you for the question. I think there's a few questions there, and I'll go through them. First, Preston Lane is actually not on the list. We addressed Preston Lane last year when we took our grindings and laid them down there and put oils on top and basically made it into a roadway surface. So that, Preston Lane, as far as I'm aware, is not going to be on this project list, and I'm getting a confirmation of that. So I believe that may have been a miscommunication on that one. There won't be modifications to the roadway list that we put out to bid, and I'm not sure, I don't remember who said it, but it was put out there in the bid, which roadways are on the list. And that is still on our website under Doing Business with the City. And if you go to the bids page, you'll just have to unclick the Open Bids only, and that will show all the bids that we've had, I don't know, for the last 10 years. And if you go to the 2024 pavement project, you can see all the roads that will be addressed. Because those roads were bid out, it's not like we're going to switch them out for other roads. I think what, Mayor, you may be referring to is that in another staff report in this same agenda packet, we have the SB 1 list.
Right.
That can be changed. And so that list does not actually encompass the entire project. That is just a list that we have to prepare for the state to have access to that grant money. And so we do that, and that's flexible. But that's different from what we actually put in the bid, we do need to stick with. We may have the opportunity to add some segments of streets if we feel like it's the right thing to do and we have the money during construction, but we wouldn't take away any streets that are, that were part of the bid.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining that. That helped with that clarification. And again, I appreciate the work that's gone into this by Mr. Rideo and by our current engineers and your staff down there. I know that we've all been waiting, and if, I'm hoping this is approved here in a minute. Is there a date that you expect them to be able to start?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Wixem. And we're also very excited to have this one off our plate in a few short months because it has, there's has been such a long lead-up to it. We would like the contractor to start soon, like, within the next few weeks. That said, we also have to work with them on their schedule. I know they've requested to begin at the beginning of October, and so we're going to work with them on that and do everything we can to get the project done as quickly as possible. Once they are on schedule, they'll have 90 working days to complete the project.
Thank you for that. And again, I just want to reiterate how appreciative I am that SUZA Construction will be doing this, and I feel like we're going to be in good hands, very confident about the job they'll do. Questions or comments to my left? To my right?
No, are we ready?
I think Councilmember Landrum has some.
Oh, no.
No? I'll take a motion from someone then.
I'll move that we approve Agenda Item 9A to award a contract to SUZA Construction for the 2024 pavement rehabilitation project for a total of $4,383,595.98, which includes a 10% contingency budget executable by the city manager. The city's attorneys, the city attorney's office has reviewed the contract with SUZA as to form, am I reading the right thing? As to form such contract subject to the final improvement as to form by the city attorney prior to full execution.
Hold second.
Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all. Five-minute break, please. Five-minute break, please. Thank you, everyone. We're going to get restarted here. Moving on to Item 9B, Authorization to Submit Grant Application for the California Coastal Commission. And I will turn it over to our Community Development Director.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Airline Singhwall, Community Development Director. So this item is a request to consider an author, resolution authorizing staff to submit a grant application to the California Coastal Commission under the Local Coastal Program, Local Assistance Planning Grant Program for an update to the Waterfront Master Plan. This is a request for additional funding. So last September, the city council authorized city staff to submit a grant application in the amount of $500,000 to Coastal Commission for an update to the Waterfront Master Plan. After that authorization, community development staff had discussions with Coastal Commission staff, and coastal staff signaled that additional funding could be available under this grant program. So staff, again, is presenting this request for additional funding to increase the ask from $500,000 to $750,000. The additional $250,000 would fund a parking relocation plan to identify opportunities for relocating parking spaces removed as the, the street end parking on the west of Embarcadero is replaced by, by plazas as envisioned by the, by the general plan. Additionally, the $250,000 additional budget would also fund a plaza plan as part of the waterfront master plan update process. Coastal Commission staff has confirmed that there is no, no grant limit, although there's a statement on the application that there's a $500,000 cap to the, the grant. Coastal staff confirmed that that's actually outdated reference. There is no limit. The only factor is for any grant over $500,000, Coastal Commission approval is required versus a grant up to $500,000, Coastal Commission staff could, could approve it. So that concludes the staff recommendation or the staff presentation. Available for questions.
Thank you very much. Questions?
I had a question about the funding amount. So if we asked for $500,000 in, what year was that, the last time we?
So it was September 2023. So it was about a year ago.
A year ago. So with inflation, that's like, should we ask for more than $250,000? Or is, do you feel like that's going to be adequate?
So the additional $250,000, we do feel is adequate for the additional scope that we're requesting to fund.
And let's see. What if we don't use all of the money? What happens to the excess? Like if it costs less than whatever grant amount we get? If we get a grant?
So I'm not, I'm not certain, to be honest, if we don't, if we don't use all the money, you know, there's the possibility. I mean, we wouldn't be able to, in order to, when we receive the grant, we'll get a grant agreement. And then as the city incurs cost, we submit for reimbursement to Coastal Commission. So if we weren't able to, you know, provide evidence of expenditures, we just wouldn't be reimbursed for, for the full grant amount. We'll only be reimbursed for the costs that are incurred. And again, the, you know, projected budget and request is the $750,000.
Okay. And I was wondering why, like, can you tell me why we wouldn't go all the way south to the Inimoro Bay? Like, is there, is that, is it because it's just the, is the waterfront master plan only the Embarcadero? Is that?
Thank you for, for that question. So currently, the waterfront master plan covers the area from Thailand's Park to, to Moro Rock on both sides of the Embarcadero. Of course, I wasn't here last year when the council, you know, first considered this grant application. But in reviewing the prior staff report in minutes, it sounds like there was a discussion on, you know, to what extent the area that's covered by the waterfront master plan should be expanded. And the, the direction that staff received from council, and that's incorporated into the, the grant application, is to extend the waterfront master plan area to also include the pedestrian bridge across Moro Creek, the old wastewater treatment plant site. And there was a reference to offshore wind, which I'm taking as, you know, just as we update the waterfront master plan, identifying any areas that are, you know, strategically important for, for offshore wind and make sure those are included in the waterfront master plan update.
Okay. And I appreciate your, your doing this. I'm just a little bit confused because I feel like, kind of like Groundhog Day, like we've already done all of this. We, we, with Director Graham, we, I thought we were already going to be applying for this. Am I, we, we applied and we didn't get it? Or?
I can, so of course, I can't speak, you know, directly because I wasn't here at the time. But my understanding, again, is after the application was, you know, authorized by the city council, we received indication from, you know, coastal staff, additional funding could be available. And then there were some, you know, as we know, staff changes in the community development department. And this was one of my priorities when I started to pick this up and come to your council with this item to ask for more budget.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, Councilmember Barton? Questions?
Yeah, I actually have, just, just for clarification, there's one area, and I just lost it. It makes reference to $75,000 with a staff time in-kind match, 10% or approximately $75,000. I just want to make sure that is inclusive of the, I mean, that's a part of the $250,000, correct?
So the way it's structured is the, the $750,000 grant amount. That's all budgeted for consultant costs to update the waterfront master plan and prepare technical studies. We also budgeted for 10% of that or $75,000 in just in staff time. So in-kind staff costs as we work with the consultant and attend community workshops and meetings, that would count towards that $75,000. Now, there isn't a requirement for, for local match. We went ahead and added that additional budget because, again, there's an understanding that it will take staff time. And by providing this additional kind of local, local match, it can improve the competitiveness of the application.
Thank you. Any other questions? Want to open public comment on this item?
Betty Winholz, I would just like to read aloud my comment to you because I want to get my word in there. So while, and this is based on how the general plan went for us, that we didn't just update it, we actually rewrote it. And so I'm wondering if that isn't going to be what happens this time, that we're not just updating the document, but we're actually changing, changing it and the direction that it's going. So, and in light of that, if we are changing direction, I wanted to make a plug for these two things. So one, in developing street ends on the Embarcadero, this concept was put into our general plan by the community director, the former one. It did not necessarily reflect the public's opinion. So I would hope that not just the development, but the correctness of which ends should or should not be eliminated from parking. So as you do a new parking management plan, as you would with a big project, that you'd have maybe a no-project option. So we could see how that works out in terms of loss of spaces and, and location of spaces because you're going to be looking at that anyways. And then number two, to develop at the Rock, again, this is something that was put in by staff. Again, not, the public doesn't necessarily want to see development out at the Rock. So as you look at that, that there be a option or a project, no-project option with that. And so I'm just asking if you won't consider those when you're making up this, this description. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands?
No, Mayor Wixson, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Mr. Singhwall, would you care to address that?
Sure. So if the, the city is successful in this grant and we receive our grant agreement from Coastal Commission, we would then, you know, proceed with a request for proposals to hire a consultant to initiate the waterfront master plan update. And that would include numerous community, you know, visioning workshops to really scope out the, the grant, I'm sorry, the waterfront master plan update. So I think there would be ample opportunities for the community and council to kind of weigh in on what the, the scope of work would be and what the vision would be for the waterfront.
Thank you for that. Questions or comments?
I have one question for you, Mr. Singhwall. Before you came on to, before you became our staff, we had a lot of interaction with Cal Poly regarding, they did a project that was the harbor area, like Coleman Park to the, to the Rock essentially. And in discussion with the landscape architecture department, the head of their department, she mentioned she would love to be involved. Just, I'm just putting this out there, not to take up too much more time, but they would love to be involved in the waterfront master plan update if there is some way that we can involve their department. And so I'm wondering if there's ways, of course, for us to have cost savings, or would it be more, would it cost us more? I don't know. But, but I just want to put in that little plug there so we don't forget that, that there is that offer to involve Cal Poly in this. So, and, and there, you know, there, there was a lot of work done around the harbor. And it's just, it's really neat to have that outside perspective. But when I asked, you know, is, are you talking about students? And she was like, yeah, but also like under the direction of their professors, right? So just think that'd be a great opportunity. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember, what? Councilmember Barton?
I do have one more question.
I do have one more question. So it looks like, if you look at the schedule, schedule on page seven, it shows a projected start date of October 1st, which is really soon, for the waterfront master plan advisory committee. And I'm wondering at what point we, I mean, that's very, very soon. So what point do we select calendar all of that and, and select the committee?
So the, the October 1st date, that was anticipating, you know, being optimistic that we receive timely approval from, from Coastal Commission on, on the grant. That's when staff would begin to prepare the request for proposals and then, of course, issue it. And I think the schedule estimates beginning of 2025, January 2025, is when we would have a consultant under contract to be able to, to start the work. So we wouldn't necessarily have the, the committee on board by, by October. That's just when we would start the RFP process and get a consultant under contract. And some of those, those details of the work plan and schedule are really just, you know, to be determined. This is a kind of general, rough, you know, timeline.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I think part of that was probably prior to this addition being added on in that timeline. I think when we talked about this last year and approved this, and thank you for picking it up and adding this extra funding to it. Hopefully, we will have the opportunity to receive the grant, first and foremost, is, oh my God. That happened. My mother. Sorry. That this was just going to be a part of the waterfront master plan. Obviously, this funding won't be enough to do what would be an entire waterfront master plan. And we talked about doing it in segments. Is that still the mindset? That was the conversation we had with, when Mr. Graham was here.
So I mean, my understanding is it is a complete update to the waterfront master plan.
So this will be enough funding to achieve that?
Yes.
Okay. That was not?
That's the projection.
Okay. When we originally talked about this with the $500,000, he alluded to the fact that we would probably look at it somewhat in sections more because of the funding and that, that that wouldn't be enough to do the complete, especially maybe it was because we had added the pedestrian bridge and the wastewater treatment plan area to it in that extension. I'm not sure. To be, to be continued, I guess?
Yeah, I guess I would say that, that may fall into the, the category of, yeah, to be continued. Or as we really get into the, get into the, the details on it. But when I, when I say yes, this is, you know, adequate funding for the complete update of the waterfront master plan. That's based on my review of past staff reports and the application to Coastal Commission. I don't believe it referenced a segmented approach. But again, if we get into it and realize that we don't have the, the budget for a complete, comprehensive update, we may have to, you know, reevaluate at that time.
Thank you.
I just wonder why we wouldn't ask for more. And like, that's why I was kind of where I was going with, what do you do if there's, not, if you have too much? Like, can, can we, is it a bad idea to ask for, if it's a grant, to ask for more? And then, more than we think we need? And then, I mean, did they give you what you asked for? Or did they say, no, we'll give you this much? I don't, I don't know how?
I think that's the limit of the grant.
No, it's not. It's unlimited. There is not a limit on it. It's, if it's over $500,000, then, right? There's not a limit.
So I specifically asked this question to Coastal staff. They said there is no cap. There was $31 million in total under this, this grant program. I don't know how many grants Coastal Commission has approved to date. I think what it comes down to is what we think is, you know, an adequate budget to do, to do the work effort. And from, you know, what I can tell from my research so far is $750,000 seems to be, you know, our, our best guess of the, the cost at this point in time.
I also wanted to add that, it's my recollection, perhaps Coastal Commission has suggested this amount to our city team based on the, the work need to be done. So that's, I, I think that's just to add to Ireland's statement. The other thing I, I think we could ask for more, perhaps we should do this to see what they say on a 750, and then, and then we can add more gradually. One part, I'm a bit concerned even for $750,000, that's a large amount to, to manage. And the more money you have, the more management you have to put in. And you have, perhaps would hire multiple consultants to spend the money. And the scope is getting too large to be maybe challenging to manage at one time.
Will this require a consultant to manage? I mean, it is a consultant we're using. Does this require, like, the paving? Does it require a consultant to manage the consultant?
I have not had that discussion with Community Director Singwal just yet. But once you get it bigger and bigger with other, other priorities that were other, other projects that, that department has to work on. And I, I, I'm just concerned that that may, to a point, that the consultant needs a sub-consultant and sub-consultants, and sub-consultant and a team of consultants needs somebody to really be on them.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a quick question, piggybacking off of your question. So if we were to get the full, if we apply, we get the full $750,000. At that point in time, and right now, we're just deciding on like, we need the money to get started. And so my question is, is then, at that point, once the money is granted, then we would develop a plan, right? Like, the staff would develop a plan to bring back to council on how to proceed with next steps?
I would say that's, that's correct. I mean, the application right now, and I mean, for the most part, the application I'm bringing forward is the same application that was brought forward last year with some additional items to, to the scope of work. And it's, it's fairly general. I think we, you're correct. Once we actually have the grant, if we're successful, then we would put together more of a detailed work program. And that would, in large part, be inserted into the, the request for proposals. And there, there could be opportunities to get council and public input, you know, before we issue the request for proposals, if that's the council's desire.
Okay. So then at that point, you would have a better idea, knowing the full amount of money that you've been granted. And after you are able to give it some more time and thought, you'll be able to come to us and say, yeah, we do need to piece it out. Or let's just go for it. Let's, you know. So I feel like, right now, we're really just giving you the ability to get the funding so that we could move forward. And then we'll, we'll go from there. Thank you.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. And, and I hope in that engagement, we will also include our advisory boards that are all stakeholders in that, too. I think they'll have a lot to contribute to that, with that. And if there's no more comments or questions, I'll ask someone to make a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 5824, authorizing staff to submit a grant application for California Coastal Commission, local assistance grant program to fund the update of the city's 1996 waterfront master plan in the amount of $750,000. This is a $250,000 increase to the amount authorized by the city council for the same grant application on September 26, 2023.
Thank you.
A second thought?
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Voice vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Singwal. Moving on to 9C, I'm turning this over to amend council policies and procedures section. And I will turn it over to the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. This item is to amend Section 5.5 of the City Council Policies and Procedures, and also to consider council authorization of town hall meetings at the request of Councilmember Landrum, if she has topics that she might want to conduct between now and the election. Council approved earlier this year the addition of Section 5.5 to council policies and procedures. The goal of this was to promote community engagement and to make sure that council members had use of city facilities free of charge for community engagement. And there were some restrictions in that Section 5.5. One of them is that council members can use this policy six times a year, that no council member could use this section 120 days prior to an election. That is based upon, there's very strict rules in the state on using public funds for political advantage. And we took a broad approach of just saying no use of facilities under this program, period. Also, that the use of the town hall, the facilities for town halls, the council member needs to demonstrate a reasonable connection to the city council adopted goals and that that should be facilitated through the city manager. At the request of Councilmember Landrum for fine tuning of Section 5.5, it was pointed out that if a council member is not running for reelection, then, you know, perhaps they could use this Section 5.5. So we brought to council two options. One of them is that during that 120-day period, council through an agendized item can approve the use of Section 5.5 for a council member not running for reelection. Or just simply say that if you're not running for reelection, you can do one of your six town halls during that time. So that's at the council's option. Do one of those or not do any of them. And then also, to make sure we could facilitate having approval ahead of time, if Councilmember Landrum does want to seek approval tonight from council, for an exception to this policy, we have agendized that there are some potential topics that council member shared she might want to do. And so at her pleasure, if she wants council to consider those, council could approve those tonight. And I think the city manager wanted to weigh in on a staff recommendation for option A or option B. Did you want to address that, city manager?
Thank you, City Attorney, but I, I think I would, wanted to hear city council's discussion and then I can provide input. My recommendation, if city council wanted to choose between option A and then option B, my recommendation would be option A, and then I'll state why. But I wanted, I think, again, out of respect for council members, and I want to hear council members' input first.
Thank you. And anything else from the city clerk to add? No, thank you. Just want to throw that in there. Thank you. I'll start with questions down at this end. Councilmember Ford, questions?
I guess, I, I have kind of a, what's, I, I get we're in a weird, you know, a unique time because we don't have like anyone, I mean, yes, they'll be on the ballot, but, but still, we don't really have an election happening, really. And, and so my question is, because I also want to protect my fellow council members. It's not just, you know, I want to, I want to promote the ability to do these things. But I also fear that if we do give, let's say, for example, Councilmember Land, or sorry, Mayor Protim Landrum, the ability to do one of these and topics get brought up, or something gets brought up and it's regarding, you know, maybe a measure that's on the ballot, or something is misconstrued, or, or maybe somebody who is running, not this year, but in the future, who's running, is a guest and, and makes an appearance and starts talking about whatever. All I'm saying is that I worry about, a concern of mine, and I don't know that it overrides like my support of moving on with this recommendation, but I just want to state that I do have fear that there could be some sort of problem in the future with you or another council member who is not running, that could, that there could be some issues in the future. And I don't think I explained that very well, but just, does anyone else see that there could be any possibilities of something negative happening from this? If we were to just move forward with allowing anyone who's not running to have the ability to do this?
So I would make two comments. One would be that option A requires that they would, you would come to the council for approval. And the secondary part of that is that, as the city attorney stated, it needs to be aligned with the goals. So a measure, ballot measure, would not be aligned with the goals. So that self-regulates it, I think, already there, just to answer that.
No, I, yes, I appreciate that. And so, and I'm not worried about, I'm not worried about the council. I'm just saying, like, you know, if something were, yeah, perception, number one. And number two, if somebody were to be there and to disrupt, it becomes a political thing. I just, I, I want to, I want to protect our, our council, is all I'm saying. So I just wanted to just kind of play devil's advocate for just a minute and just make sure we're vetting that out before we move forward. Because I know that we chose that original block of time to protect council, not to prohibit you from communicating to our public, but to protect you. So that's why I'm bringing that up.
Yeah, I'm not trying to throw a wrench in this, but, you know, we, we were, it was kind of, you know, later in the meeting, it was kind of quick, quick talked over. And, and I started thinking about where I'm at with my listening sessions and trying to, you know, I have lots of groups that I want to get to in the community as well. So I understand Mayor Protim Landrum, where you're at. I'm so eager to, to get out there. So I, too, am kind of at this, you know, crossroads where I'm not really sure because I do want to protect the institution, the council, and I also want to protect, you know, abide by the law, of course. So, yeah, I, I could see, would, would, maybe Mr. Newmeyer, would A, cover that? If, if either one of us or both of us wanted to do that, or we have to now come back again? Would it have to be agendized again if I said, you know, yeah, I completely can relate to Mayor Protim Landrum? And I, I could see the benefits of starting back up, but I don't know. What are your thoughts?
So two responses to that. One, we have agendized tonight the council's ability to approve town halls for council members who aren't running for reelection, to have those approved upcoming in the next few months. We made sure that was agendized properly. Second, speaking to the concerns that you've expressed, it's really going to be on the council member if they're going to be holding these town halls to make sure that even if the topic that's approved by council is not related to the election, that, you know, it doesn't veer into that direction. And if it does, then it's really going to be on the council member, not the city, for that improper use of public resources. Now, I trust that the council will make sure if they use this option, that the town halls will stick on topic. And so the reason why this original policy was written the way it was is that it was just a very conservative approach on just, don't do it. Versus this one provides the option to the council member, and so it's really going to be a self-policing thing. And it's entirely up to council, you know, it's a policy choice. I mean, it's a perfectly lawful and reasonable policy to adopt either of these. Option A, of course, gives council some authority, some guardrails, if you will, ahead of time to know what the town hall is going to be. So, for example, you know, you have a town hall on just some innocuous issue, and then it turns out everyone's talking about election issues. Well, you know, at that point, the council member would presumably let the folks know that, you know, that's not what we're here for tonight. And if folks continue on doing that, then just end the session. And then that's that. But it's going to require some self-policing by council members if the topics go off track.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Newmeyer, because mine are not issue-based. They're literally a listening session in a neighborhood where I'm kind of hearing them out as to what issues literally are happening in their neighborhood. That usually ends up roads or, you know, something of that nature. So.
So to address that, I mean, the items that MPT Landrum had proposed, that she was considering, you know, and we had them here on the agenda, but it could be other ones. It's listed on here as, you know, homelessness, the downtown harbor issues such as infrastructure needs, waterfront sustainability, et cetera. And there's some other topics on there. So if the council says, yeah, you know, do a town hall on one of those, you know, as long as that town hall doesn't, you know, involve issues on the ballot, then, you know, I don't see any- I don't see any issue with that. If the town hall was to be on anything and everything you want to talk about, well, I'd be concerned about, you know, what's going to show up. So, that's maybe speaks to why city manager Kimball is suggesting Option A. So, the topics are vetted by the council during that 120-day election window, period.
So, question to that, are you there? So, question to that, then, I'm, I'm going to assume by the time we get to that 120-day window, council members are looking for their opportunity to hold a couple town hall meetings during that four-month period and not have to go dead air. One, you can still hold them, just not at a city facility where you're using city services, so it doesn't prohibit you from having a town hall on a ballot issue, just not using the resources from the city. And to your comment, Councilmember Edwards, you do a community listening session versus a town hall format, and you have the ability to include in your invitation that, you know, the topics are not related to ballot issues. So, I think that it is addressed. My question is, can you bring, if we did Option A, I mean, I like Option B because you just don't have to deal with it, but if we do Option A, then if, like, just for example, we use Councilmember Edwards and Mayor Protim Landrum, because they're the, well, the other two may want to also, so sorry. Can, if they had used four of their listening session times up and had two more, can they bring them all at once? I don't want to bog down our agenda every time, every other month, or whatever, and create a window of challenge for them, if they're looking at wanting to do something in the next few weeks, if they can't do it until the agenda's out.
Yes, for sure. You know, it could all be brought at once. I don't see an issue with that at all.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Burton, questions? Council, Mayor Protim?
I want to thank Mr. Newmeyer for all your work on this. I, I think, would this be an appropriate time, because this is, has brought the, the, we didn't consider this, but if we didn't have a ballot measure on the, on the election, we wouldn't, I mean, we would have this restriction for no reason. And so, maybe we should have language that if we run into this situation ever again, that it's, you know, it's not relevant.
So, if there wasn't a ballot measure, then the council would have an option under California law of simply not going through the motions of holding an election. So, that's something that, it's a very unique situation right now, because we have, you know, papers, three candidates pulled papers, and so, you know, those seats are uncontested, but we have a ballot measure, so an election needs to be held. It's unusual to have uncontested, it's unusual to have a ballot measure, and they both just happen at the same time. So, I don't expect this would happen again. It might.
And then, as far, and I always, you know, just when I think about this, I think, of course, you can have your own, you, I mean, as a council member, during an election, you could reserve and pay for the, the same facility. And how would a, anyone in the public know that you did that, versus know that you were doing it with council's approval? I mean, the, when we talk about perception, the, I mean, how do they, the perception is the same. And also, as, as council members, when we, you know, take the oath to become council members, we are required to conduct ourselves in a certain way, that as soon as we leave our house, that is expected of us. So, I mean, you're, you're kind of operating under that all the time. So, there's, there's also that.
Did you want me to address those questions?
Sure.
Okay. So, for the first one, the difference, at least in terms of the law, is that if the city is subsidizing the use of the facility by waiving the fee, then that is a use of a public resource, and so, there's a strict prohibition on that occurring for election purposes. Versus, if a council member rents the hall, and, and the city makes the halls available for political purposes during election season, then anyone and everyone can do it. And that's a different policy issue. As for the perception, you know, I would suggest that if a council member is renting a hall outside of this policy during election season, I would suggest, even though it's not required, that they make clear that those are the circumstances, to your point about being vigilant in perception.
I also, go ahead, sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I also want to, to say a few things, that, first of all, this policy is not really to, it's not personal. It's really a policy designed to be here to deal with situation, and all kind of situation. And to circle back on Mayor Protim's question regarding using town hall, if you were to pay for yourself, who would know? I would certainly suggest that when you make your flyer, you have to say paid for by Mayor Protim Landrum. So then, you can make that disclaimer, and, and then people can know that. And also, the town, the resources, the policy using city resources, right now, it's, the town hall, the, this facility is one of the resources, and also the website, when we are putting, posting the town hall flyer on the website. So, all these, that's part of resources as well, this policy, address those. So, that was another consideration, and thus, we wanted some clarification on that. That's the original policy, the way it stays is that then we didn't, you're getting into these, and we just don't have it at all. And then the revision would talk about, give, with, basically, just add, if there's no election, and then council member wanted to, like this year's situation, council member wanted to have this town hall, and, and then can bring before the city council, the city council to, together to wait it out, to approve. So, that's the Option A. I appreciate, I appreciate all the discussion happened so far, and city attorney explained why I support, why I recommend A, and also, and address some of the concerns of Councilmember Ford brought up as well. So, I think that's, that's Option A, give these answers. Additionally, I want to invite city council to look at it from staff perspective, and if the city manager or any staff are in charge of interpreting your policy, I want to make sure that I am not doing the things that my individual bosses are not happy with. So, I want to collectively have five of you to say, oh, yeah, it's okay, so staff is not in the middle. If situation occurs, staff is not in the middle to interpret the things that city council, individual council members might want, or might not want to.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you. And understanding your job is to protect your staff. Public comment is open on this item? Seeing no public comment. AGP? Is there anyone in the queue?
There are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Comments?
First and foremost, I just want to thank our, our two council members here that do take the time to do this, and I, no, I really want to give you kudos, because I think it's important, and I want to thank the staff that helps prepare you for these events. And I appreciate looking at this a little bit more, because I know that we want to get this right. And, and sometimes I think we, we discuss things for a really lengthy time, and people are falling asleep, but I think it's for a good reason, because we want to get it right. And so, I, at this time, I'm, I'm with the city manager as far as looking at Option I think it, it also helps with the public perception, because the subjects have to come forward, and so, it's, it's made aware to the public that, okay, we're, this is, you know, a city paid for, you know, the facility is paid for, it's clear. And for the reasons that the city manager stated, I think that it's, it's good that the council has a chance to weigh in. And I agree with you, Mayor Protim Landrum, that it is up to us to self-regulate and, and to police ourselves, and to make sure that we're upholding ourselves to a certain standard. There are bad actors out there. I don't think we have any here. We might have some in the future, you never know. But I think that it's great that our city attorney did clarify that that does, that responsibility does fall onto the council member if they do go against the rules, the law, and it doesn't fall, the liability doesn't fall onto the city, right? Just to clarify.
If, if the city has taken formal action to authorize a town hall on a non-election-related matter, and then a council member, none of you and none of the folks that are running right now, but let's say 15 years from now, somebody we don't know, they turn it into an election rally, against the direction of the council, then they would have personal liability, and they have the threat of the FPPC, or the DA, or a resident coming after them. As long as the city isn't sanctioning it, then the city's fine.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that once more. So, yeah, I think when we're making policy, we're making it for, you know, 50, 60 years from now, right? So, it doesn't have to get changed all the time. So, with that being said, I recommend that we, you know, I'll let everyone else weigh in, but I'm, I'm in favor of Option A.
Thank you. Councilmember Burton?
I'm comfortable with that. We've kind of been doing that. I mean, we, our next meeting, I would probably announce I'm doing this area of town, and, you know, the date, time, all that stuff, which is what you've done, Mayor Protim, as well, so, kind of, Option A makes sense to me.
Can I clarify? Is that, is that what you mean? Is just what we've been doing in, you know, I'm having a listening session, or I'm having a town hall in two weeks, and this is the subject? No?
No, council would weigh in and approve. Like, tonight, you have a request.
Right.
So, part of this tonight is also including your request to be able to move forward with, and to ask for, how many have you had? Four, so you want to do two more over the next couple of months, and that would take you to the end of the year.
Yeah, and that's something I'm not really clear on either, because I've had, since I've been on council, I've had five, but they haven't all been in one year. And then, I don't, some of them were before we had this policy, so I'm not really clear on that. And then, also, do we really want to have that limit beyond the, the election part? Because from my perspective, and, you know, this is a huge effort of time for me to do these things, and I'm sure for Councilmember Edwards as well, it takes a lot of, for me, it's a lot of, you know, research, and, you know, it's, it's a lot of work. And so, I don't know why, and that is for public outreach and community engagement, and I don't know why that is ever restricted in government. I think that should be encouraged, in my opinion. And I'm curious why we would want to put a governor on that.
I'm going to respond first. We already had this conversation, and we determined as a council majority, all of us, that we were going to limit it to six, based on staff resources, for the fact that there's five council members that theoretically, I, I don't do town halls the way you do, I hold office hours, so I don't ask staff to prepare any time or any subjects for me. I use the little baby room that's free to everybody at the community center, so anyone can use it, so I don't need to ask for approval for it. You choose a different format, and we restricted that because of the fact that it could be 30 times if all five of us wanted to use those, that resource. So, you still have the ability to use it, just not as a city resource, and we already had that conversation.
Well, we are looking at this, we are relooking at this, and I am just, I guess I am looking at it through my lens, which I don't use any staff resources, other than the building. I mean, I, the last one, I did ask that we put it on the hot topics, so I guess I correct myself. I did have it put on hot topics once, and then the one with, on short-term rentals, I asked for, you know, which, which is information that anyone in the public should be able to get, but it turned out that it was really not easy, easy to get, which was wrong and needed to be fixed. So, but I guess you're right, Mayor. Someone could have staff write their whole, you know, everything for them. I, I don't think about things like that, but, yeah, I understand that.
Just holistically, there's five of us, and it could potentially, and I think that we did that specifically, that, you know, by the time you do your research, or Councilmember Edwards does, it's hard, you know, you've said that before, you put a lot of time and effort into it, and so, doing one every other month, or six years, it's a lot, it's a lot. And, and I appreciate it and respect it, but I think that we, we chose that number for the sheer fact that we have new council members that are going to be joining, they may want to have listening sessions every month, I don't know. I could poll one of them, but, you know, and so, I, I just think it, it would be a slippery slope.
And I think that when we make policy, we try to make it as evergreen as possible, right? So that we don't have to come back and talk about it again and again, which, this one, we've already discussed a few times, but it's also, as we said, it's a unique situation. But, but I think that if we can make a really good policy, we don't have to constantly amend it. And so, when I look at making policy or, or amending policy, I look at, how does this look 10, 20, 30 years from now? And I'm not making it for the council members sitting here, I'm making it for those that are here in 20 years. And so, this is not, you know, none of this is regarding the way you conduct your city halls, and I think they're amazing, from what I've heard. But, but this is not for your specific city hall, this is for whatever anyone here, or in the future, wants to use city resources for. So, for that reason, I'm still in favor of Option A.
So, in, let me also clarify, so if we go with Option A, I need to let you know what, okay, which is in, is mentioned in the, in the agenda, so, there we go.
Is there anything more we need from Councilmember Landrum this evening, in regards to that part of this vote?
So, there's two decisions here. One of them is to amend the policy, and you can amend it with Option A or B. And I'd suggest that you do a vote on that, if there's a motion in a second. The second choice is that at Councilmember Landrum's pleasure, MPT Landrum's pleasure, or any other council member tonight, they can ask council to approve a topic for a town hall between now and election day. And so, there's, there's actually two action items on this agenda. When MPT and I talked about this, she wasn't certain whether tonight she wanted to seek authorization or not, so the option's there. So, I would defer to the MPT on whether she wants to pursue that second course of action tonight.
Okay. Can I ask one more question, please, that Mayor Protim brought up? Is the timeline, did we, didn't we set that with the calendar year? Wasn't that?
Yes, this was approved January 9th of this year, and it's for the calendar year.
Right, so it was calendar year. Okay. Perfect, thank you. Okay, so. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make one.
Perfect.
Okay, I move that we adopt, I guess, I'll read, so is it, do I have to read number one, and then the option?
No, because this is a resolution, so you don't have to read out the whole title.
Okay, okay. So, I recommend that council goes with Option A, to affirm that council by agendized action may consider specific exceptions to the restrictions in Section 5.5 during election season, for council members not running the election, not running that election season for reelection. And I'd also like, in the, no different motion? Okay. That's it.
And I'll second that. Voice vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second half?
Okay, I'll make another motion, that we approve, or, sorry, approve Mayor Protim Landrum's potential upcoming town hall meetings. And I'm absolutely cool with homelessness, the downtown, harbor issues, waterfront sust- And I'm absolutely cool with homelessness, the downtown harbor issues, waterfront sustainability, and what local government can do, and what is in our water, air, and food. I'm fine with all of those. Anyone want a second?
I just want to, I want to follow that up with, I wasn't sure, so we threw a bunch of things.
But I think, my motion is that if any of those are are one of your topics.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any other conversation?
Oh, and for, I just want to, in looking out for my fellow councilwomen, for any of them, other than the mayor, I guess, to do one of, like, for instance, Councilmember Edwards, to do a listening session, she doesn't need, does she need to get approval? Or so kind of, it's open, open right now?
So it depends. If she wants to use section 5.5, then yes. If she wants to just do a listening session at, you know, Sun 'n' Buns or whatever, then she doesn't need council approval.
All right, well, I'm just, just, all right.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Voice vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, I lost my screen here, I'm still thrown off from that phone ringing. City Manager Kimball. And I will remind council, we have 30 minutes left, and if everyone will indulge this evening, even if we don't finish, we have an early meeting tomorrow morning, the city manager, and I deal with the grand jury, so I'd like to stop at 9:30.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is a happy item, so I'm going to do it really quick, and hopefully you can understand me with my accent. And then, one I say is a happy item because I want to look through the list, and there's 27 short-term action goals within the four area, focus areas, and we completed, completed majority, 14 of them, and then seven is near completion, and I will have a six still pending there. Under public infrastructure, I highlighted a few things that I think we can highlight, either being the city council priority or something that is moving forward. I wanted to have a further, more, more information, there's three things, street paving with Dallas today, and then the council chamber upgrade, and also the storm recovery, I for self invite public work structure colleague to explain, and I'm putting this, the verbiage of the goals there. Greg, could you please take over on this?
Yes, thank you, City Manager Kimball. And so there are, there are many items in the public infrastructure goal, and so the City Manager Kimball has put a couple of them in here, which I appreciate that. The AV upgrades, I actually met with the consultant we're working with today on that, and we have some timelines and some tasks. It's a very small contract that we've engaged the consultant in. That consultant is going to help us understand what our options are. It's not as simple, and I think we've talked about this at council, it's not as simple as just replacing equipment. There's different options that we have in terms of automated system, wireless systems, and those have cost implications, they have implications sometimes in how we run our meetings, how we're set up, whether we need several people to continue to run our meetings, or one, or none. And so we're going to have those options ready for council. Our target is the first meeting in October, and that would put us at October 8. And once we have direction from the city council on what kind of project to develop, then we can go out with an RFP for procurement and installation of that equipment. Coinciding with that, there may be some other building upgrades that the city staff will recommend if we have the funding, or if we think we have the funding for it. And so we'll be presenting that again on October 8. In terms of FEMA, this has been a very labor-intensive process. Everyone who's done FEMA knows this, and you never get as much money as you think you're going to get. And so we did identify many damages soon after the storms of January and March 2023. Since then, we've been having weekly meetings with FEMA staff, and many, many, many tasks and deliverables that we've had to give to FEMA. I'll just share that it's especially challenging in that we've had staff turnover in terms of folks internally who have been working on FEMA. So our city engineer Cindy Cecil has has now taken over the whole FEMA process. FEMA themselves have had turnover, we've, I think we're on our third or fourth project manager, and every time we get a new one, it's, you know, in many ways, starting over. The system is very complicated, that we have to input documents into different project or program managers from FEMA, want different files in different places, they can't find them, and I cannot begin to describe how complex it is. And that said, we've made some progress, we're at a step, half of our projects that we've input are at a step called second review, which is a good thing. That said, we think it'll take a couple more years to get through the process. Many of the projects that we have put in are being found to be ineligible for one reason or another, and we're trying to fight that as much as we can, and there are some projects where we can't, we just don't really have any avenues to fight that anymore. Some common themes are that the city hasn't really maintained its infrastructure, so that when some of these storm drains, for example, are failing, then we have a situation where we're asking FEMA to pay to maintain our infrastructure, not to replace something that was in good condition and broken, and they just don't want to do that. So anyway, we could, we could talk for a long time about that, I won't do that to you tonight, but it is something that we continue to work on, and so both of those goals are in progress.
Thank you, Greg. I also want to add on the FEMA end of that, this is very small, but in the packet, page 223, you will see some details on that, and we had 23 projects that we submitted, and then we have been denied a couple because the reasons that Director Colley cited, and I also want to point it out that, like he said, it's very time-consuming. I know in my last city, when I was in Florida dealing with the storm, hurricane recovery in Arizona, I didn't have to, had the issue, but then here, it is, it is very, very time-consuming, and I sometimes just chose not to, not to, not to work with them, because after you get started, it's very frustrating, and they tell you one thing, and then next thing, let's say they tell you something else, and you did all your work, and then by the end of the day, they're going to tell you that you didn't have maintenance records, so after all this, and they're telling you that. And so I really applaud the efforts that our staff put in on this, and this is, hopefully we'll get something out of that. And it appears that we submitted 40 million damages, and so that's a, that's a, that's a big, is it, am I right, 40 million or 40 million?
I think it was between 15 and 20 million.
Okay, so that's a big dollar amount, so it does appear.
City Manager Kimball, if I could give one example of this, we recently had a, a project, I was just talking to Cindy about it, it's escaping my mind right now, but I mean, Eric Radio poured probably 100 hours into it, Cindy maybe 30, and it turns out that we found out that insurance covered it, and so FEMA's throwing it out. And so just imagine all those engineers' hours gone for really no benefit at all. It's a very, very frustrating process, and as Ms. Kimball said, there are some cities who just say, we just don't want to do this, it's not really worth our time. I don't think we're at that point yet, and we've put in so much time that it would be hard to turn around now. There are some bright spots and points of light, we did get some insurance money, it does look like we'll be eligible for some FEMA reimbursement, but it, again, it is a very disheartening process, to say the least.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And then, on the other hand, we want to look at this, this goal as, it's just not just FEMA, it's storm recovery, and I think that's really a worthy, something that we, worthy task we need to do, and and I wanted to point out a few things that along the ways we were able to accomplish. For example, the Sequoia Storm Drain Project that the city council just approved the contract for tonight, that's actually a small action to to recover from the storm. So with that, I'm going to move on to the next, next one, any questions on this? Okay, so let's move on. Economic vitality, on this one, all these check marks, and, but I wanted to highlight a couple, the Market Plaza, Michael Plaza Development, and then related to that is the city-owned property, city-owned review of city-owned properties. For market, I'm actually going to hand over to the city, city attorney to give a kind of a status update on where we are and what's the, the challenges that staff is facing.
So in brief, as the council and community knows, the city has for some time now owned the 781 Market Street property. The city has considered at multiple times different development options. The city was moving forward before COVID with one developer, that fell through. After COVID, the city started considering another approach. Where we're at right now is the city and staff are still looking at different options for the property, and my understanding is that staff is going to be bringing options to council on what to do now at this point, because a lot of time has passed for this property, and where to go with it is going to be a policy decision. And so it's certainly important to council and the community on what's going to happen there, but I believe that staff at this point is going to need some more feedback on what direction to take this in. So happy to answer any questions about this. I've been along for this ride since the city first put out this RFP back in 2017, I think, for the original development on this, and here we are right now, so. And I know this council has dug into this a bit. The prior council decided to pause on this for various reasons, and, and so here we are now, and it's still an important issue.
I would just ask that when this comes back to us, that perhaps it also includes some of those other city properties, so we can evaluate and look at that portfolio, so we're looking at it more holistically than just one item. We have the teen center, which we've had conversation with, we have some other city-owned properties, and I think it would help us, I'm not talking about all the little stuff, that's just a lot we own somewhere, but these that are, feed into how other decisions are made, I think would help us. Thank you.
I have a comment on, and maybe a question for you, Mr. Newmeyer. So regarding this property, I know that we, it was mentioned that we, there, there is another developer interested, and I know that they've put a lot of time and effort into this property, and I would like to see, I, I'm going to just kind of throw something out there, in the construction industry in our region, Morro Bay is kind of, we have a reputation, and I don't think that's a secret, but it's, we have a reputation of being difficult to work with, and I want to improve that. I'd love to see, I'd love to explore how we can improve upon that, and, and I think one way to move forward with that is, in this recommendation that you were saying to bring back more information and options, my question is, you know, we're already moving in a certain direction, unless there was something that has happened that I'm unaware of, with those folks that are interested in developing this property, I would like to see us just continue to move on and get this done with, because we've been dragging them through this process. And, and so I don't know if that's something that we need to have come back as a future agenda item, or, you know, I'm just kind of wondering where we go with this, because I think out of respect for, for those people, that we, we make a decision and we don't just keep being wishy-washy on what we're doing there. So.
I took it as his comment was to do that.
Well, yeah, but then if he's coming back with three options, and one of them is to go to RFP, and, and then that kind of is a signal to me, or for me, I feel like that's kind of a signal to the developers that, like, oh, they're reconsidering again.
Well, I would consider that the offer was five years ago originally, and a lot of things have changed since COVID, and now you also have a subtenant who has come to council with the request to participate in, on future option there, too. So I mean, it just opens Pandora's Box if we don't bring it back to.
I, I hear what you're saying, Mayor. I, I just, I disagree, because I don't think that all of the reasons why it's taken this long is, doesn't fall on the developer.
Well, I guess I would probably want to try and stick to the goals tonight if that's something, because most of our real estate negotiations are done closed session.
Correct. So, but I'm just.
I would suggest that, to the mayor's point and to your point, Councilmember Ford, to preserve the city's bargaining position and to preserve the city's interests in the matter, I think that it would be appropriate to have a closed session on a status for where the city's at right now currently with this project. I think that there has been, that there have been some continuing developments that I think that at this point, as I was saying, present options to the council, and I believe that the city's interests are best protected if we discuss this in closed session, because this is a pricey piece of real estate, and we want to get the best deal we can out of it. So like all real estate discussions, you know, typically we do this in closed session first, but council doesn't approve this stuff unless it's done at a public session after we negotiate enclosed.
Okay. Okay, so we can bring this back to closed session, then? Okay.
Yes, at the pleasure of the council and the city manager.
Regarding the specific, because I just want to make sure we have direction that it's, I, I think we, yeah, I don't, I know we're limited to what we can say here, but I'm asking that we bring it back, and would that be a future, do I, is this the appropriate time to ask for it to come back to closed session?
Sure, it's goals.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's, I'm asking if I have any.
They already have that direction.
Okay.
Because it's on the, it's on the goals, and it's a closed session item.
Okay. I, I, okay, I, I just got a different impression, that it's kind of like, ooh, one of these three options, and I'm like, ah, that just, again, sets another signal to the community. So anyway, I don't want to spend too much more time on it, but.
Right, certainly. So I, it does, I think precisely that's where our staff felt that there's some uncertainties, and perhaps individual council members understanding of the direction given to staff at a closed session, it's, there's nuance to it, and then your interpretation is different, so I think you would, after, you know, think about this, I think it would, would help everybody if we bring this back in closed session, we can do it at a next, next council meeting before the regular council meeting, and on which date, but 10? Yeah, thank you, September 10. And just to clarify, this is exactly what we wanted us to do, and then with some thoughtful discussion, and then also Mayor suggested to put a consideration of other properties that city have, which I, I think these, those bigger property, like Mayor said, you don't need all of them, like, we have bathroom and all that, that's occupied, but really the valuable ones, they are, there are just a few listed in the, in the list, for example, they are the teen center property, and then the, the city hall property, and then, of course, the Market Street one, and then also the wastewater treatment plant, wastewater and treatment plant, and also there's another, a Navas Street property that kind of presented some sort of opportunity. So we, when we talk about it, I think Mayor's point is that let's holistically talk about everything. Okay, I saw head now, so I think that's the direction, correct? Is that, I see Councilmember Landrum and Councilmember Barton, is that something you would like to, for us to do? I'm looking at you, is this okay to be closed session discussion?
Yes, the city properly can consider disposition of its real estate, whether it's going to buy or sell in closed session, and also to the point about 781 Market Street, there have been. And also to the point about 781 Market Street, there have been some new developments that I think council should be made aware of in closed session that I think would prejudice the city's position, frankly, if it brought it up in public session right now, since the last closed session on 781 Market Street.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add to that? The review of city-owned properties, to me, at the time when we, this was a goal, I didn't, I still don't really have clarity on what all the city-owned properties are and what we're doing with them all. And so is that what you're saying, that would be in, in closed session?
No, I just, in closed session, we're going to talk about those valuable, not to say other properties are not valuable. And I believe the city has a list on all the properties we own, because we have to pay insurance on them. So from that perspective, I can ask, and city clerk, do we have a, from the insurance, like the insurance, so we could give you a list. But I think, I run into that, it's very, it's not very user-friendly, that you have all these pages, I don't know how many pieces, some little piece, you would have the parks and everything. So they're, they're not, yeah, everything, it's not, the right away is on there. So you have to sort them out, and right away is not, nothing I can use for. So I think, city clerk and I discussed this, and then we felt that those are the valuable pieces that you actually, they can have an opportunity and have something to it, and then the right away is, it's just, you can discuss that, but it's gonna just make a distraction to the, to the focus. So I would suggest us focus on these bigger valuable properties. And I can certainly give city council that the list we have, and then you can, you can prove that list.
Thank you.
Okay.
And can I just address something that councilmember Ford was talking about earlier, about the city's reputation? And I just wanted to just also mention that the city also has, I mean, reputation, I don't, you know, I don't know how much emphasis that, like, I really put on those things, but we also do have a reputation of being an old boys' club kind of city, too, where certain people get, you know, kind of favoritism and priority. And so there's that as well, so.
Well, in the interest of time, I'm going to move on to the housing. That's the third, that's our third focus area. And then in here, we want to talk about the continued, there's some programs that community development director are going to share with you, that they're going to address the housing infrastructure plan, and then affordable housing incentive programs. And then I highlighted the green, the possible upzone Seashell Estates property, and I just learned some, some updates on that one. So with all that, I'm going to hand it over to Erin, please.
Thank you, Erin. Single wall is community development director, so I will highlight some accomplishments related to the housing and homelessness goal. So the city had been engaging with Slocog on the five-year housing and infrastructure framework. Slocog is the lead on that, and Slocog did publish in August 2023 on their website, the final work product of the housing and infrastructure framework. We also continue to have monthly, we participate in monthly housing action team meetings with Slocog and representative from the county in each of the, the other cities, just to discuss current kind of regional housing issues. You know, for example, there's a lot of new state laws being passed that affect how cities need to process certain housing projects. And it's been just a helpful forum to coordinate with our colleagues at the county and other cities on, on those topics. I did also, I received some information that Slocog may be eligible for another grant that would result in the continuation of some of that regional housing and infrastructure planning work. As far as affordable housing incentive programs, I wanted to, you'll point out, when I presented on the downtown design district recommendations, one of those recommendations is using the city's current density bonus ordinance as appropriate, which is designed to be an incentive, offering some development concessions and additional density for housing projects that provide restricted affordable housing. So that's a tool that's currently available in the city's zoning code, you know, consistent with, with state law to incentivize affordable housing.
So then the point is that affordable housing, it's a very complex program, and it's going to be ongoing. I really foresee this subject going to be ongoing and then no ending. And the state has adopted some new laws in which, in return, kind of just mandated us to provide these incentives. For example, SB nine and so on and so forth, right?
That's correct. There's SB nine, also SB 684 went into effect July 1st. That is a new law similar to SB nine, but applies more to multifamily development, and it requires cities and counties that are subject to 684, and the city of Morro Bay is to, to approve multifamily development projects up to 10 units and 10 new lots that meet certain criteria, such as being on sites less than five acres and surrounded on three sides by development. Those projects must be approved through a ministerial process, so we can't require a public hearing on those. So that's an example of pretty significant state law affecting our local control to an extent, but also streamlining housing development within, within the city. There was also, city manager mentioned an update on the Seashell Estates project that I want to address. So the item on the list here, you'll reference is upzoning the, the property. That request to upzone the property was withdrawn. However, the developer recently has submitted a plan to develop the 10 existing lots there with 30 homes, so it'd be one single-family dwelling ADU and a junior ADU on each of those 10 existing lots. And that's a significant reduction from the original, you know, proposed development of 70 units on, on that site through the, through the upzone.
That's a good update, thank you. I am going to move on unless you have questions. Oh, yes, sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Singwell, I just wanted to kind of just tie some stuff here together, if you will. It seems to me like a lot of this conversation is going to fall under the downtown design district purview. Does it seem that way to you? Because I'm noticing some connections here, and it was mentioned in some of the, the areas that are ongoing, including the incentive program, historical preservation, STR analysis. There was some of that in this report. And I'm just wondering if, if you think that some of that's going to get flushed, like, flushed out during the process that we have ahead of us, which is one more meeting and a public input forum in that report?
Certainly, to the extent that it's focused in the downtown area. But I think the overall objective of that effort is to look for opportunities to have additional housing, some increased density and economic activity in, in the downtown. So that's certainly, yeah, a major focus.
Yeah, sorry, not that it's centric, that, like, just that area, but it'll be good. I feel like at least that's another step in the right direction was, in terms of the goals, too, in those areas. Thank you.
Director Singwell, with that change in scope on that project at the Seashell Estates, that won't require an up, or a change in zoning, right? Or?
So, yeah, that's, that's development that's allowed by the existing zoning. I think just the, the scope of the project will require discretionary CDP going to planning commission, but it's within the existing zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the community engagement. So for in community engagement, we're doing so well with city council, city council members, town hall, and the listening session, and office hours, and the newsletter, and then your grocery store stop talk, and all that, all that communication that you push out, we are doing, I felt that I'm so proud of the engagement that we have been, the progress we made on the engagement and in the staff. And I know as here stated, PD have the citizen academy, and they're going to continue doing that, and the police chief, she's visible every special events that the city has. So we're really, you know, covered a lot of grounds there. And, and then, but one thing I wanted to talk about is the historical preservation ordinance. And then with that, I'm going to hand it to, hand it to Director Singwell.
Thank you, city manager Kimball. So, yeah, kind of maybe tearing off the discussion just a minute ago regarding downtown design district. I think, you know, it is noteworthy that while it's focused on the downtown, one of those recommendations was, you know, what can we do within our current resources for this more incremental approach? And that was, you know, as kind of an immediate action, working with the historical society on the list of, you know, character-defining buildings, and using that as a basis once we get to the point to, when we have additional resources to begin working on historic preservation ordinance, I think that initial work effort with the historical society will help feed into that larger effort of update, of developing historic preservation ordinance.
Okay, thank you. So we kind of have to pivot, adjust on this one a little bit, because ordinance is more undertake than just get a start as one point, and then we can move on. And perhaps if city council and the community is interested in, and you can continue to do that in next years as your goal, as far as ordinance goes. But we'll get a start to do inventory, I think that will be attainable for the remainder of the year. With that, this is just additional considerations. I wanted to, just in case somebody asks why not everything is finished, because we do have ongoing priorities and existing workload, and also consider that we have position changes. And then however, I think the completion of the zoning code update just in, in March had, had a kind of bring, bring into completion on many of the goals. If you read, read the colored, the colored copy, you will see the early data. Once the zoning code was certified, that kind of finished many goals on the list. With that, I just have a list of things that, not on the short-term goals, but we're either working on, or it's, it's just ongoing, like new, new council orientation, the 60th anniversary celebration, again, the celebration was not really going to be actually happening if just on me, and because I wasn't doing anything, it's really on the committee, and the mayor stated with chaired by Kirk, mayor Greg, and police chief, and then all the other city staff, and then community members. So really proud of that effort. And then the work is still, you know, still need to deal with that. And short-term rental, short-term rental had been, become an issue that we're, we've been continuing making some effort to, to resolve. And there's just more than, more extensive than we originally thought when the ordinance was, was adopted. So I'm not going to go on and on, and it's, it's the things that, where, you know. And so this is, I really like this one, but everybody's gone, no one here to see that. I just want to take a moment to, to, to say thank you to the city council. And I like the quote from President Roosevelt that work hard at work worth doing, certainly working for our community, Morro Bay, is something very, very rewarding. And President Roosevelt said that far, far and away, the best prize that life offers is a chance to work hard at work worth doing. And I just adore that, that quote. But he also said, nothing worth doing is never ever easy. So just to say that we're going to continue our work, and it's never-ending.
Thank you for the update. Thank you, city manager Kimball, and thank you to staff for the update. We're pushing the envelope, but I want to see if we can't wrap this up, so I'm going to open public comment on this item. Anyone for public comment? Seeing none. AGP, is there anyone in the queue?
Hi, Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
It's a quiet night in the queue. Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Questions or comments on the update?
Just thank you. It was a great job in all of those tasks, seeing the ones that have been completed. I'm so blown away, especially with all the additional tasks that come along. So kudos to staff, thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it's, it's incredible to see the progress of the work that's been done by staff, considering, I remember when we came in and the amount of goals that we had, and I remember city manager, interim city manager Greg Carpenter just kind of looking at us like, all right, and good luck with that. So I just want to say thank you. It's incredible to see that.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton?
Yeah, same for me, thank you. It's good to see the progress.
Mayor Protem?
Likewise, it is great to see the progress, and it's, it is definitely work, work worth doing.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I just want to say that I, I want to, again, my thank goes to the city council for your direction, for your support, and of course, for, for my amazing and incredible team. And there's, it's together we accomplish all these things, with city council and even the community, because it gave us drive, we're going to go. All right, thank you. For, we get some direction, and so we're, we're going to move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And you're right, it is a team with all of us, and we're fortunate to have the community and advisory boards and staff, everybody working collaboratively, and to achieve so many of these goals that we have, considering that we had a, this was in 2023, and then in 2024, we got kicked back to the curb again with all the floods and everything else. So it really did set back so much staff time, just addressing that, that it's amazing that we've been able to still keep picking up the pieces and move forward. Some things seem like, oh, we haven't gotten there yet, but considering what those two years of flooding has done to our community, we really have made some strides, so thank you. Future agenda items?
Of course. I have one, too, when you're done.
Oh, you go ahead, you go ahead.
Mine's really quick, and I don't know if it's an agenda item for now, but I think it's for the future, that it was, the idea was inspired by Director Qualick's explanation as to the difficulties working with FEMA and the reimbursement process. And so my question to council, as in, when this is all said and done, and it probably won't, it won't be in my term, but when it's all said and done, I encourage council to write a letter to your federal representatives to encourage them to address the process and to improve upon that process. And I think that it's important for small towns like us to let them know what it's, what it's done to our town, to our city. And so I don't know when that will be, but I think when it's all done, I think that there should be some support there.
Thank you.
For change.
Okay. I was wanting to see if I could get approval for a future agenda item. And we might already have it, and I just don't know, but for, it's hard for me to keep track of the future agenda items. And I was wondering if there's some way that staff could come up with that we could, like, track the future agenda items, and like, their progress, and where, you know, where they are, and.
Maybe a quarterly report or something?
Yeah, or like on the planning track, they have, you know, you know the status of everything and where it is, and, you know, it's, it's easy for things to get lost otherwise.
So I would support that. Anybody else?
I'll just add that we do have that.
We do.
We can share it with you more frequently and do a better job of updating and communicating.
Oh, yeah, that would be great, thank you. And then I was, I think it's a reasonable idea to ask Senator Laird and Assemblymember Addis how quickly and where the informational meetings will be held, and offer the community center as the location, and if we could get council, I could get council approval for that.
Maybe you did just ask.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe I did. I don't have the answer in my head right now.
Well, maybe we could, like, you know, create a letter and, and ask that they do that, or that, suggest it, or?
I can't participate in that request.
That's right, you can't.
I'm not sure I'm understanding that we need to agendize it as an item, or is it? I'm not sure I'm understanding that we need to agendize it as an item, or is it something that we could just do individually to send Mr. Newmeyer?
Or as a?
So equivalent to Councilmember Ford's, I'm sorry, equivalent to Council, MPT Landrum's request for a future agenda item for, you know, knowing where the future agenda items go, we got a response from staff that, you know, that can already be done, so it's not a future agenda item. So this could either just be simply requesting council members to send letters on your own, or we could agendize a letter for the council to approve, signed by the mayor, that has the content that MPT suggested. So there's two different ways to go here.
I personally like the, the single letter, but I'd like to hear thoughts on that.
I, I'm amenable to either way. I don't know that we need to bring it back for an item, though.
Yeah, yeah.
We could just do it. I just sent a letter, which you all received a copy of, to 3CE, but it was from me, not from the council. So individually, so we can?
So essentially, if we can, if we get a, I know it's not on agenda, we can just write a letter and a letterhead, and so then let the mayor sign, and basically just saying that we invite these state agencies to have meeting, and we quarterly invite you, and consider using our facility free of charge.
Love it. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And to be, sorry, just to be clear, that letter would be from the mayor, though, not from the council.
Yes.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it's, just to be formal about this, if it's from the full council, it should be an agendized item you vote on, but the mayor could certainly send a letter in her individual capacity as a council member, and we can just make that known that she's doing that now, so.
Okay. That's official for, enough for me. And we also have some inside information getting through here. And then finally, I think it's also reasonable to ask for a pause in approving any more, in any new best projects until we have citing and development standards for any, for best For new ones?
New funding?
No, 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 no. Citing, until we have new, new approval of any, any, no new, no applicants for best projects until we have, this is just such new stuff, and we're, we don't, we're finding that there's, there's a lot of things to consider, and I think it's good, it's a good idea to have citing and development standards for, we don't have those. I mean, other cities have done that. Like, I think?
Mr. Singwall? Can I get that, or the city attorney?
So the city could have an agenda item to consider a moratorium. There's certain legal requirements that we need to meet before we can impose a moratorium. Director Singwall and I have briefly discussed this, and if council wants an agenda item to come back that is on that topic, then staff could bring one back on council options. To do a moratorium, like I say, there's certain conditions that need to be met. If the concern is putting a pause on accepting applications for any potential future best project or other projects that potentially pose hazardous or safety risks to the city, then the city could consider moratoriums on that. But again, there's legal requirements, because this is statutory, doing moratoriums. So at the council's pleasure, I mean, perhaps Director Singwall has a few more thoughts on that, or?
Within the city and/or the sphere of influence of the city, so?
Yeah, within the city. I mean, their sphere of influence would be controlled by the county.
I would be, and I, you know, don't see it needing to come in the next couple of weeks, but I would support that, just to have that conversation.
City Manager was just asking how much time I would estimate this would take for staff. I would defer to Director Singwall on perhaps his thoughts. I mean, we could do perhaps a summary of options without bringing forward an actual moratorium, which, you know, try to keep, keep it low on staff time, just to let you know your options, to address the issue that, you know, we've heard from the public and MPT has brought up on what can we do right now for future applications that might show up, and providing some standards for the city to use to process those.
So that'd be something similar in its infancy, then, of what we've done with the towers in town? The, what do you call them?
Cell phone?
Cell phone towers. Don't we have an ordinance on that, the locations and things like that in the city?
Yes.
The cell phone towers?
Yes. I mean, there's a number of different options here. You know, the director and the city manager and I can talk on providing, I suppose, a robust list of different options to see if you, if the council wants to pursue those, because there'd be a difference between, you know, citing standards versus a potential moratorium versus, you know, there's a lot of different options, but we'd have to look at it. But I think the general idea is clear on what council wants. Perhaps City Manager, I think, has some questions or?
I just, to the question of, you know, the workload effort, having worked on a couple urgency ordinances in the past, it's a pretty significant, you know, workload. There's, as the city attorney stated, there's definitely very strict legal requirements, required findings that have to be met. And the, you know, the general kind of concept of an urgency ordinance is a temporary pause as the city works on a permanent ordinance. And so it's a significant workload effort, and of course, we just had a presentation on our city goals, so it would compete with other priorities that the Community Development Department is working on, as well as the City Attorney's Office.
Without agendizing something like that, then an applicant could come into the city and propose a project, and we would have no guidelines?
We wouldn't have any specific for another battery energy storage system, because we don't have that in our codes right now. I mean, we would process it the way that the current application has been processed. So, yes.
Because that's going so well. I don't think you have enough support.
How much support did I need?
Three.
Three?
So I think we'll have to circle back and?
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's just a matter of staff time. I mean, it's, I, I'm not opposed to, I, okay, I know, we're getting late tonight, and I can't even make sentences here, but I hear what you're saying, Mayor Protem, and my, yeah, my only concern is that it's, it's not a, it's not a goal, but at the same time, you know, we could say, oh, yeah, there won't be any other projects that come forward between now and next goal setting, but that, we don't know that for a fact. So.
I would clarify that I really want Erin to weigh in on that. I think if the concern was if there's another battery project came in as an application, what are we going to do with that? I think some battery depends on where, and it could, staff perhaps has option to bring to city council or planning commission, whatever the appropriate authority would be to ask you a kind of consent authorization to process, right? Can we do that, yeah? How'd that work?
I believe the city manager is referring to the fact that this current application for a best requires a land use change. And so that's a part of this discussion, too, is that, I suppose, you know, are there sites in the city where the current zoning would allow another best to show up? The council has a lot more control over land use changes than they, than council does over use permits. It just depends on the burdens that need to be met. So what's significant about this application right now is that there's a land use change involved. I suppose, speaking to MPT's question or issue here, is what if someone were to submit an application where the zoning is accurate, then that has already been met. So I think there's a lot to unpack here on options. I mean, I know that other communities have adopted moratoriums, which, you know, are limited in time, but it gives the city a pause to look at certain standards. I know down in Southern California, there's been one or two cities that have done that and some other ones, so it has been done, but I think there would need to be some unpacking here, and we need to look at different options for this.
I mean, Mayor Protem Landrum, I think that's where I'm sitting, is I'm just not sure how to unpack this in my head either. So I feel like I would want more information, if anything, on what this would?
So perhaps we could?
Yeah.
A future agenda item that would bring back what?
Yeah, that would, could discuss.
Without getting into actually doing a moratorium.
Right. Well, and I, I kind of was thinking that's, you know, we talk about it, but, I mean, then that's putting a lot of, I guess, either way, it's a workload for staff, but it seems important because we could be hit with, you know, hit with, and not know, not be prepared. It just seems good to be prepared.
I would say that, let me discuss with the community director and development director, and then city attorney up line, and we can bring something back appropriately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.